Okay, welcome to the July 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held by a video conferencing in accordance with Governor's Order 202.1. And until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments, to pre-register to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's meeting live only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left side, and click "Live" link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not pre-register, please go to the town meeting portal, choose the meeting group, and drop down on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I ask that you say the Pledge of Allegiance with me now. Allegiance? We'll be starting this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be muting the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will all be sworn in. They will state their name and address for the record, and will offer testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves for any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of that hearing. Unless, at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public until August 3rd. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary and sent by email, regular mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's orders, these meetings will be recorded and will be posted to the town's website. Please also note that any written submissions that were previously due to the board by July 3rd, 2020. Town Hall is closed tomorrow, so make sure that you email them to Candace today. And with that, we'll go to the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 18th. Okay, Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
I left the meeting early, but I did view the minutes, and I vote yea.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Helen, unmute yourself.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Chair votes aye. And I have a second motion to approve the June 18th minutes as amended to reflect the time that members left the meeting.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
For the next matter, I'd ask Mr. Kelly to take care of that.
I have a motion to amend the June 4th minutes for the application of River Rock to amend the due date for written submissions to June 19th.
Second.
Mr. Kelly, can you pull?
Aye. Yep. Aye. Oh, I'll pull the board, I'm sorry. Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Myself, I vote aye.
I recuse myself on that matter. Okay, going to the decisions for adjournment next, Katie, correct?
Again.
We'll do adjournments next?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, sure. How you want to do decisions first, Brian? Or you want to do?
No, we'll go right through the agenda.
Normal stuff, alright.
Yep.
Alright, so... First thing I have here is number eight, which is Moonlight LLC. I move to adjourn that to our September 17th meeting.
Second.
Right, Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, I am nine on the agenda. Is Robert Raphael going to move to adjourn that to our August 6th meeting?
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 10 on the agenda, which is K.A.A.R.P. Management Group LLC. Move to adjourn that to our July 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Han? Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
I vote nay on that. I'm tired of adjourning this. I don't know why we keep doing it. I think they either put up or go away.
They're in the pool right now, Mike.
Chair votes aye. Next matter, Mr. Tuttle?
Next item I got is 27 Dune LLC.
Which one? I couldn't hear you.
27 Dune LLC. I'd like to move to reopen, make a motion to reopen 27 Dune LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Three open.
And now I'd like to make a motion to adjourn 27 Dune LLC to our July 16th meeting for further discussion.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Mr. Kelly? Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Alright, still working on the decision calendar. Frank Frances, move that to our, adjourn to our 8/6 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tuttle? Mrs. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next four that I have are all going to be adjourned to our 7/16 meeting, which is Brian Parente, 2331 Montauk LLC, Seaglass Ventures LLC, and... Let's do those three first, okay, please?
Could you say that again, Mr. Tuttle?
Brian Parente, 2331 Montauk LLC, and Seaglass Ventures LLC.
Only three, is that right?
Only three, yes ma'am.
Okay.
I'm recused on one of those, so Mr. Kelly, if you could do the vote for the adjournment?
Sure. Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill?
Aye.
And myself as acting chairman, which I usurped since Brian recused himself and now he's not here. Chair votes aye.
Okay, the last one I wanted to... On decision calendar is Jack Bartellemi. I would like to make a motion to reopen, to accept written subs.
Mr. Kelly, again, if you can handle that one, that's my last one.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Toddhill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. Tuttle, did you give a date to Jack's case?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Now I'd like to make a motion to close and adjourn the decision for Bartellemi to July 16th.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, Helen, did you have a question, babe?
No, but thanks for asking.
Alright, I thought you had something you wanted to say. Alright, so we're gonna go back to the beginning of the agenda, alright? Item one on the agenda is Linda Held. That's 1164 Still a Whole Road in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-49-1-5.4. Advocate, this is a minor variance review, so you know. Advocate requests relief from Town Code 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 60 feet where 80 feet is required and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
Okay, it's a minor variance. There'll be no public hearing, and the case is yours, Ms. Burgess.
There'll be a decision at the end of the hearing.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hi, Mary Jane.
Oh, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
We can't, we don't usually take testimony on minors.
We don't, we don't need any, Mary Jane.
The only thing I wanted to mention is, I was told by Candace today that this had to require referral to the Conservation Board, and I notified my client, and basically, they indicated to me that they have a non-jurisdiction letter on this property, which I emailed to both Candace and you, Katie. So I just wanted to let you know that, because I know that the GIS site said that it was within the wetlands jurisdiction, and therefore, conservation referral was required. So I notified my clients. They sent me the non-jurisdiction letter that was issued in 2019, and it's good till 2022. And they were asking whether that would be sufficient for you to proceed tonight rather than adjourning.
Okay, well, we weren't, we were really just gonna close it and do written submissions anyways.
Correct.
So we can close it, and we'll keep it?
Just for the record, Mary Jane, if you could just state your name and appearance?
Oh, sorry.
Just for consistency on that.
Sorry, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Burke Lanigan Nosato, 21 South Main Street, Southampton, New York, for the applicant. Yeah, the Zoom thing, I'm... I'm not laughing. I am laughing, but I'm not laughing. So if you would close, except, as I said, I have emailed, and I know that you don't have it now, but if it was for the referral, I did email those to you at the town and Candace, the non-jurisdiction letter issued by the Environmental Division. That was, that's been good until, that's good until 2022. So hopefully, if it's closed for other than submissions, then we can proceed.
That's, I believe Ms. Burgess is gonna close it, leaving it open for written submissions based on the Zoom meeting and to receive your letter of non-jurisdiction. And with that, if Ms. Burgess wants to make a motion to that effect.
Yes, and we're still going to have our decision at the end of the hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Decessor?
No.
No, we are not.
No.
We can put it on for decision at the next meeting, Helen. We were waiting to hear on referrals. Mary Jane says that she has a letter of non-jurisdiction, so we can keep it open for written subs.
I will go to keep it open and have a hearing on a decision on July 16th.
That's fine.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye, Mary Jane.
Mr. Tuttle? Alright, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Mary Jane.
Thank you, good evening.
You too.
Item two on the agenda is Raymond Gallagher, 21 Landing Lane, East Quad, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-362-2-3. Advocate requests relief from the following provisions in the Town Code for the location of a proposed swimming pool. 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street setback, front yard of 15 feet where 30 feet is required from the eastern lead property line, Shinnecock Road. And two, 330-7016, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building and any other relief necessary.
I am waiting on an affidavit and posting. The applicant here, Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Gallagher, anyone here? The application of 21 Landings Lane in East Quad.
One second, I'll...
Okay, because we can't even open this until we have the posting, but I thought maybe he could tell us where it is.
We will second call this matter.
Yep.
Yeah, around midnight. Okay. Moving on to item three on the agenda, which is Gregory O'Halloran and Marlene O'Halloran, 17 Wicketuck Drive in Neuyak, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-15-2-43. Advocate requests relief from the following provisions in the Town Code. One, for a proposed one-story addition to the east side of the existing dwelling. 330-115C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of 4.8 feet where 5.11 feet is existing, with a total side yard setback of 15.9 feet where 16.221 feet is existing. And 330-84D pyramid, for an encroachment in an amount of 1,757.4 cubic feet. 988.8 cubic feet existing, and 768.6 cubic feet proposed. And two, to legalize an outdoor shower constructed without the benefit of a building permit. 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 6.9 feet where 8 feet is required. And two, 330-7016, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the outdoor shower to remain within the total side yard of the principal dwelling and not conforming lots and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction? We're looking for Lori Wiltshire.
Katie, can you enlarge that survey a little more, please?
Yeah. Do we see Lori? Is that better?
That's good.
Do we have Lori Wiltshire here? Or anybody for this application?
Anybody here for 17 Wicketuck Drive in Neuyak?
One second.
O'Halloran and O'Halloran.
What's the name?
O'Halloran. Gregory O'Halloran and Marlene O'Halloran.
Or Lori Wiltshire?
You're hearing no one else?
I got Lori, I got Lori. She's coming in. It's tough when you share the screen, it's hard for me to see.
Sorry. I don't enjoy sharing my screen either. Next time, I'll wait until we get the applicant.
Yeah, she should be in by now. Can you hear us, Lori? Unmute. Lori. I guess we should move, I guess we should move on, she will not unmute.
Okay. Mr. Toddhill, onto number four, please.
Alright, so we're gonna, second call, three?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Item four on the agenda is Frederick Van Wick, 101 Big Fresh Pond Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-94-3-2.1. Advocate requests a determination as to whether or not the proposed accessory building, which will house an accessory apartment, is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code 330-5 definitions because of its size and proportion to the main dwelling and its use. In addition, advocate requests relief from Town Code 330-11.2G1, accessory apartment special standard...
Can you hear me?
For to allow the total floor area habitable living space of the proposed accessory apartment to be in excess of the allowable 35% to wit 39% and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? Lori?
Sorry to interrupt. Can you hear me?
Yep, Lori, we'll come back to you. We've moved on to Van Wick.
Thank you. Okay, great.
Wait, now we're looking for Bruce Anderson?
Okay.
Bruce, can you unmute yourself?
One second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you share your video, Bruce?
Or... What are you, hoping that's the right one?
No.
I think that's Mr. Bennett.
May not be able to. I have a raised hand. QA chat. Yeah, I don't think we have any kind of... Thought we were supposed to be getting better at this, not worse.
It's a new format, you know, so I'm trying to figure out...
It is a new format.
Yeah. Try hitting the up arrow here.
So what is your screen name? And then I can help you.
It's Bruce.
Bruce.
Alright, one second. Sorry, folks.
Not giving us the option for video.
One second. Now you should have it.
Alright, I'm right up here.
Alright, there you go. No, no, hold on.
Okay.
It's part of video, we got it now.
It takes a minute.
Okay, we're good shape. You guys can see me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, Bruce, name and address, please.
Bruce Anderson Suffolk Environmental Consulting, offices on Main Street, Bridgehampton.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Very good, thank you. Tell us why you're here.
Okay, I'm gonna start by a little background. Back in the fall of last year, and at the advice of the then Chief Inspector, Michael Benincasa, we filed a request seeking an amendment to the zoning decision number 9703 dated September 21st, 1995, which was issued to a Florence billing, which authorized the right to maintain one apartment to an existing two-story dwelling. The requested amendment sought to relocate the existing apartment, a dwelling unit protected by certificate of occupancy, to a proposed detached building. That request to amend the zoning decision was made on October 24th, 2019, and public hearings ensued that occurred on November 21st, and then again on January 20th, January 2nd, 2020. The zoning board opened up the matter on February 6th, as per correspondence received from Dennis O'Rourke, Principal Building Inspector, dated February 6th, 2020, which resulted in two options available to the property owner. They were to submit a request for relief from 330-11.2G1 to maintain the size of the proposed accessory structure as is, or two, to amend the project so that the size of the accessory structure would comply with 330-11.2G1. On April 9th, we file an application seeking variance relief from the requirements of 330-11.2G1, which states that an accessory apartment shall be the minimum 400 square feet, and it shall not exceed 35% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling to a maximum of 1,000 square feet on a lot to which the accessory structure is to be added. Although, the right to maintain one apartment is protected by certificate of occupancy, the applicant would abandon the existing apartment located on the second floor of the existing dwelling if the variance request were granted. And that's important to know. So the, if you choose to grant this variance, the apartment in the house will be abandoned. That CEO goes away, and we are subject to the accessory apartment laws of the town. The second thing that the board needs to take notice of, or I hope they take notice, is that although the requested relief is for the construction of a proposed accessory apartment containing 993 square feet of habitable space, where 885 square feet is allowed, given the existing principal dwelling at 2,528 square feet, such relief would be temporary, as the second floor of the principal dwelling for which the apartment presently exists is to be redeveloped, redeveloped in accordance with a typical single-family dwelling. That is, once the principal dwelling is redeveloped, the habitable space contained therein would contain 3,736 square feet. 35% of that, 3,736 square feet, would equal 1,307 square feet. Here, the proposed accessory apartment would contain 993 square feet, which is below the 1,000 square feet permitted as of right for the accessory apartment, and obviously, well under the 35% limitation. The percentage would then calculate at 26% if the variance was granted, and as the dwelling is redeveloped. So this is a variance request that enables the parallel construction of both structures with the understanding that once the single-family dwelling is redeveloped, the very, the area exceedance of the 35% goes away.
Bruce, why not build the house first? And then you don't have to be here.
The house exists.
The house exists, and it's gonna be redeveloped, and what you want, which is gonna take a considerable amount of time. What we intend on doing is filing building permits simultaneously for both structures. We will, we will proceed with the construction of the accessory structure first, which will enable the property owner a place to live while the larger, more extensive construction of the main house takes place. That's why we're applying for the variance.
To be fair to Bruce, we did ask him to come back for this. He had initially come to the board to amend the prior ZVA decision. There was a lot of community opposition on this, because it really just wasn't clear what the intentions were. So this is, you know, he is essentially entitled to have an accessory apartment. It's in the house, now he's gonna move it out of the house. The size of it is smaller than what exists, but now it'll be in a separate structure. So this is something that, you know, the board had been entertaining before. We just made him kind of do the paperwork, so we can, you know, hold them to the accessory apartment standards.
What happens to the old variance, Katie, that was on the main structure for the accessory apartment? What happens to that? Didn't we have to grant relief, so he could put the accessory apartment in that, the main structure?
As he had proposed it in the first application, he was trying to modify it. Now this variance will just supersede that one.
Okay.
Now they'll have a, they'll have a single-family dwelling in an accessory apartment in a separate structure.
And legally, you guys are comfortable with that, correct?
And it's the same size, Bruce, as it was when it was before, previously?
Yes. Well, in the amendment, it's smaller than the present apartment already is.
Interesting one, but I'm saying, from our previous granted approval.
Yes, yes.
Same size, same location. Nothing else has changed, aside from the, what I'm understanding it to be a procedural hurdle with the Building Department.
That is correct.
Katie, is that accurate?
Yes, I mean, there are some, there are some notes on the Building Department right up for this that Bruce should confirm with the Building Department, but yes. It's really just procedural, and it makes it cleaner, and I think it gives the neighbors... I mean, I don't know if anyone's here to speak on it, but I think, you know, from our perspective, it gives the neighbors some solace, knowing that it's gonna fall under those accessory apartment standards.
Yay.
Question, Bruce, you've said several times 993 square feet, and on the survey here, it says 1,000 square foot habitable space. It's not significant, but I mean, I think we should be consistent, right?
We were going with the architect's plans, because there are, it's the difference between exterior and interior wall dimensions, I believe.
Okay.
And that's one of the Building Department notes, so that will be clarified prior to rendering any decision.
Okay. Are there, Adam is the lead on this, and he will be retaining... Adam is the lead on this, and he will be retaining the lead and watching the video this evening. Um, are there any other board questions before we see if there's anyone here from the public?
No.
I have no questions. Time to move on.
Is there anything from the public on the application of Van Wick, 101 Big Fresh Pond Road in North Sea?
I do have, I do have someone, I think.
Very good.
Uh, let's see, this is Jim. Jim, are you asking to speak? Unmute yourself.
Okay, how's that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, my question is, as you look at this...
Sir, hold on.
Yep.
Please state your name and address. Are you an attorney, first of all?
Uh, no, I am not an attorney. My name is James Williams. I live on number 100 Big Fresh Pond Road.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Very good, thank you. Tell us why you're here, please.
Okay, I'm here again. Um, what was it, the last meeting? If you look at the survey, the driveway on the eastern side, the new curb cut, comes out in between two drains behind the telephone pole. The, the zone floods. Both, um, Big Fresh coming from both east and west have more elevation, and Randall Road comes down, and it floods. There are two, there are two drains there. The last storm, it flooded. Even though the new driveway proposed is a permeable surface, it's gonna exacerbate the flooding situation there. Flood into my front yard as of now. Secondly, because the sightlines are horrific coming out of the eastern part of the driveway. Telephone pole right there? It's, it's, it's disaster in the making, having, having another curb cut there. That's my statement.
Bruce, it appears, uh, according to the survey, that you're putting access over neighboring property. Is, is there a permission on there, or a covenant and easement, something you could provide?
Excuse me?
Who are you asking it to?
Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Oh. Um... No, what we said and will stick by is that we'll maintain the existing apartment. It's not a subject for the board, and in any event, the overall project will be discussed, uh, will be the subject of a flood, uh, flooding permit uh, from the engineering department. So, we're not anticipating any relating to road flooding.
Okay, but it's also the purview of this board to determine whether or not the curb cut is, has a decent sightline. Is that correct? Uh, that is...
What I'm trying to say is that what we're gonna do is utilize the existing curb cut.
There isn't one there. This, I'm talking the east end. You have an existing driveway now on the west end of the property. You're proposing a circular driveway coming out.
Now, we've been that we're gonna go, we're, we're gonna use the existing dirt driveway that comes off the western portion of the property away from Mr. Williams' property. So one that exists today, and we're not gonna open up a second curb cut, which addresses his concern, I believe.
Does that help answer your question, Mr. Williams?
One second. I had to mute him. Geez.
Hi, Ronette? Did you lose him?
Are you there, Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams? Unmute yourself.
Okay, we back?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, the packet that I reserved, um, I received in the mail from the applicant's, I don't know if they're attorney or whatever, shows on the survey, a curb cut on the east end. So I just wanna make sure that that's not gonna happen.
We, uh... We are not proposing a curb cut on the east end.
Okay, the survey I received from your office shows that.
Uh, if you could show them the survey up on the screen, that should resolve.
I don't, I don't have it with me, sir. I'm not even at home right now. I'm on my phone.
Oh, okay.
Um, but it was registered mail received. I could get a copy of it to you if you'd like.
Well, I, I think just, it's, it's important that anything the zoning board does this evening will include the survey which is before us, and that survey shows no curb cut on the eastern side, and the driveway being maintained. So, we are not... or anything else.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Great. Is there anybody who's heard on this application?
I do have another hand, so... Simone. Yep. We can hear you.
John Simone here. Wonder if you can hear?
Yes.
Simone, yes. Are you an attorney, sir?
Uh, yes, I happen to be an attorney, yes.
Okay, very good. I don't have to swear you in then. Just state your name and, uh, please tell us why you're here.
Good evening, uh, John Simone, um, resident of 260 and 235 Big Fresh Pond Road, and I'm here trying to understand, had previously opposed the application vehemently based on the 9703 variance. So first, as a question, do I understand the board to be saying that that 9703 has nothing to do with the granting of this application? That, uh, whether or not 9703 existed or didn't exist, or how the board is viewing that, has nothing to do with this pending application? We, we submitted multiple submissions before about how we thought the interpretation being educated by that prior variance wasn't correct or in accordance with the intent of wording. And so I just was trying to understand from what I'm hearing tonight, whether 9703 is irrelevant, that you were able to consider the accessory structure based on the 11.2G1 factor, whether or not 9703 existed.
Yes. Yes. I mean, the, the, the first application was, was... The applicant was trying to amend that prior ZBA decision. Now, and we, and the board kind of said, you know, it's, it's very difficult to amend it. Why don't you come back? Show us that you comply with all of the accessory apartment standards as they exist today in the town code. And they comply with all of them, except for what they're requesting relief from, which is basically, um, the size of it, which, um...
I see in the application, yes.
Yeah, so, but they comply with everything else. Um, and that's, so that if, if this is granted, they will comply with the accessory apartment standards that are in the town code.
Okay. And then they also, Mr. Anderson, I heard correctly, uh, represented that the applicant would be abandoning the 9703 variance. Permitting it to be extinguished? Is that what, do I hear that correctly?
That is correct.
Yes.
Oh. All right. So is that part of the record? Is there anything more that needs to be done in that respect?
Uh, if the board takes action, when the board takes action, depending on what that action is, if it were to be, for instance, approved, that previous grant would be extinguished in, as an operation of law with the grant of the new relief.
Okay. Thank you. And then my second question was, following on Mr. Williams, the, uh, the application that, uh, I was able to receive from a fellow, uh, lake resident attached as the survey, which is different than what's been posted on the screen, it's a Squire survey last revised October 22, 2019. So I guess, for the record, the survey is now a later version? And is that part of, is that part of the record?
Yes, it relates to the two curb cuts. We dropped the eastern curb.
I, I saw that, sir. Yeah. I just wondered what the date is of the survey that is now being put forward by the applicant.
December 20th, 2019.
12/2019, okay. All right. And then the last thing I had was, was there any interest in the board in hearing what the testimony or evidence is in support of item 15? It is whether or not it's conforming to the, um, to the adjacent area?
Absolutely. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Uh, I haven't heard anything from Mr. Anderson on behalf of it, other than his summary statement that he thinks it, it's sufficient, but uh, as a fellow resident not near there, uh, near the other end of the, of the lake, uh, I walk, I walk all around the lake, uh, and, um, I, I don't, I don't see accessory structures. Uh, I happen to have some aerial photographs, because I happen to be on the Lake Association Board, and so we have, we have some of the, uh, older images. And, uh, I don't see accessory structures. This one is a concern because of its proximity to the roadway. Uh, we're desperately trying to do what we can to keep, um, the area as undeveloped and as green as possible. Uh, and any additional structure obviously takes away from that, particularly one that's closer to the road rather than further away from the road.
Um, I can address that. First of all, the property is unique in that it is one of the largest properties on the lake. It contains 85,916 square feet. Most of the properties rimming the lake are a fraction of that. That's number one. Number two, we're not requesting any dimensional relief whatsoever with respect to the location of the accessory structure. It is neither too big, in our opinion. Um, once the house is redeveloped, it is not too close to any property line. Uh, there's nothing about the structure, uh, dimensionally that we're seeking relief for, because it, it complies in all respects.
Well, uh, the, the proposition under the code is about whether it's an undesirable change in the character, and not to say that you're as of right because of lot size. I'm not sure, sir, Mr. Anderson, how that responds, and, and your representation that it's virtually undetectable, I don't quite follow. I walk by with the dogs three, four times a, a week, and I've seen places where the, this accessory structure will be placed, and it's, it's obviously very detectable. Uh, there's
The, the poi.
trees there now, uh, and I don't, haven't seen your site plan to know whether you plan on removing some, subject to Mr. Shea. Uh, and I, um, so I, I don't know how it's undetectable.
Well, what...
We, we think, we think representations in, I think the representations in 15 aren't correct, so that's, that's my point, so...
A, and, and we're gonna, the, the record is gonna remain open, um, for any kind of submission that you'd like to make, whether it be aerials or written, um, until August 3rd.
Right, I saw that. Okay. All right. That was all that I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I'll lower my hand.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else here on, on this application that would like to be heard? Okay. Are there any additional questions from members of the board this evening? No. Um, if Adam was going to keep this, I would make a...
Wait there, it looks like there's somebody else, maybe?
Yes. One second. Grant.
Hey there. Good evening, everybody.
How are you, sir? Are you, are you an attorney, sir?
I am not.
Okay.
I'm a...
Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Grant Greenberg, 115 Big Fresh Pond Road.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Please tell us why you're here, sir.
So, uh, I'm an immediate neighbor to, uh, the property, and my house and my property will, the, the eastern side of my property will face, uh, the new proposed accessory apartment. Um, so just, so I'm entirely clear. Is this a new application or an amendment to the previous application?
It's a new application.
Okay. The 1995 ZBA decision allowing the apartment in the residence was made with the following caveat. It said, "The applicant is also not permitted to operate the upstairs as a bed and breakfast or as an accessory apartment under the town code." So, the, the methodology here that Mr. Anderson is using of transferring the accessory apartments into a new structure seems, uh, problematic to begin with. Essentially, what he's trying to do here is create two homes on a single lot, which I don't believe is permitted in the town code. Also, this accessory apartment is unusually large. Uh, the actual square footage of the, the apartment is four, is over 1,400 square feet. And, um, specifically, uh, I believe in, uh, the accessory apartment special standards law, G1, the accessory apartment shall be a minimum of 400 square feet and shall not exceed 35% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling to a maximum square feet on the lot to which the accessory apartment is added. So, it sounds like to me there that the maximum size it can be is 1,000 square feet. G3 goes on to say, "If an accessory apartment is to be constructed in an accessory structure, all habitable living space in that structure will count towards a maximum square footage of the accessory structure." Now, explain to me, is all habitable living space, does that not include kitchens and bathrooms? Can someone on the board answer that? Because my definition of all habitable space is everything.
Well, that, that is interpreted by the building inspector. Um, they, they verify these plans, but they, they have reviewed these and haven't raised an issue as to the size of this specifically exceeding 1,000 feet.
Because we're, we're not talking about it being 200 square feet larger than 1,000. We're talking about it being 40% larger than the maximum permitted size. This is not the size of like an apartment above a garage. This is, this is a house. And, and anyone who's telling you that this is not a house is not being truthful. This is a second house on a single lot. So I would respectfully ask that you really consider this point. Uh, I understand Mr. Van Wick has a big property, and I'm not asking that you deny him having, uh, an accessory apartment. I just feel like it's too big, uh, what he is requesting right now. And as someone who will literally be looking at his house uh, at this accessory apartment, uh, it will completely change the character of both my property, which is a wooded property, uh, and, and also the, the views from the road, as Mr. Simone previously pointed out. Um, and I also like to point out one thing in the accessory apartment law. The lot to which the accessory apartment is to be added shall have only one dwelling unit in existence on the lot at the time of application for an accessory apartment. The applicant currently has two dwelling units. So how can we give him permission to build an additional one? Is it, I mean, he hasn't, we haven't seen any filed plans for what he would like to do with the main structure. As residences, and as the town, we're going completely on his word that he's gonna renovate the main structure and increase the size, and he's, and Mr. Anderson's doing like a very clever kind of switch around here, where he's saying, you know, this is what we're gonna do, so you should grant us this extra thing, uh, in terms of the square footage, and, and that just doesn't seem fair to, uh, neighbors who haven't even been able to review what, what, uh, the applicant would like to do with the main house. So thank you for, um, for hearing all those points.
Again, we will have, the, the building department will recheck the calculations to make sure that if the board were inclined to go forward, that this is not exceeding any other section of the code, aside from what is here this evening.
Uh, Mr. Disess, did you give Bruce a copy of Dennis O'Rourke's, uh, comments?
I haven't been in town hall, so I don't know if those are folk...
Katie, does Bruce have a copy of the comments, and so that he can act accordingly?
I don't know if he has a copy, but he, he's been notified that he has to contact the building department to, you know, to, to confirm the square footage and, and all of that.
I, I have two other co, two other very brief comments. One thing is I would like, uh, for the board to consider moving, uh, proposing that the parking area be removed, moved to the rear side of, uh, the structure, so that it's on the, uh, the north side of the structure, so that the cars are not visible from the street. That would alleviate some of the inciteness of, of the proposal. And, um, and the other point that I would like to just mention is a general kind of principle for, for the town and for the accessory apartment law, which I know we're all so proud of. You know, we, obviously, we, it's, it's important that we have inexpensive housing for local residents. There is no evidence here that the application, that, that the applicant, one, uses his residence full-time, nor is there evidence that he intends to provide accommodation for local residents. He hasn't, in his current apartment that he has. It's been vacant. So, I, once again, just wanna implore you to look at this application carefully. This is setting precedent for someone to have two houses on a single lot. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more. Frederick.
Yes, hello. Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Brian, I think you need to swear in the next speaker.
I'm having a hard time hearing him. Sir, are you an attorney?
Uh, I am not.
Okay, please state your name and address, sir.
Fred Vanderwerken, 37 Shore Drive, uh, North Sea.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
Very good, thank you. Please tell us why you're here.
Okay. Um, as I've testified to, uh, before, I guess the first item I'd like to talk about is that driveway. And, um, one solution would really be to move that driveway instead of uh, disturbing the front and having the two parking places uh, visible from the road. It makes a great deal of sense, I think, to run the driveway around the It makes a great deal of sense, I think, to run the driveway around the left side of the house, have the parking in the rear. And as my reading of the zoning code is that for an accessory apartment, let's see. Parking places not be in the front yard and screened, or my recommendation, I think, would be a solution for that. But 330 11.2L states that the entrance must be from the side or rear yard. Now, by moving that driveway around to the rear of the structure would, I think, I think the neighbors would greatly appreciate it and it would allow him to view the cars instead of the neighbors, much less destruction of trees and so on, and provide much-needed screening for this project. So I would respectfully request that the, the board consider doing that as a requirement. Also, on this space issue, the size of this structure has always been a concern to me. It seems very large. And as I had testified to before, while Bruce Anderson says that this is going to be 1,000 square foot, we've excluded 400 square foot or 40% of the total. And my reading of 330.11.2G3 says that all habitable living space will count towards the maximum square footage of the structure. I think that's really key. And reducing the size of this would also be greatly appreciated by the neighbors. Just, and finally, I reviewed a number of the zoning cases. We greatly support the efforts for affordable housing in the, in the, in the town and the need for it, particularly east of the canal, which I know is an objective of everyone. However, all of, or most, the only cases that I can find are really legitimate accessory apartments for workspace or for workforce housing. Namely, they're smaller units, they usually require some relief to make it work. The people appreciate the additional income. More importantly, it does provide affordable housing. What's going to happen here, as Bruce mentioned, this is one acre running Big Fresh Pond. One acre zoning, he has one house. It appears that he's trying to build as large a structure as he can. And to think that this will be affordable housing, workforce housing, he's going to expand a 2,500 square foot house to 3,500 square foot roughly. And to think that this is going to be for some local, it's not going to be within the range. In fact, there's even language in the, in the law that talks about doing, verifying income, that it goes to a low or moderate income person. And that is deemed, the rent is deemed reasonable to ensure workforce housing. There is, I submit that there's no way that this is going to be workforce housing. This is going to be really a compound, some, some other type of thing. It's going to be two houses on one acre, where he's only entitled to one.
Thank you.
Anyway, for your consideration, this, you know, is not going to satisfy the goal of the town of providing workforce housing, in my opinion.
Bruce, how much would the building have to be reduced to comply with the 35%?
Doesn't, once the house is redeveloped, you're under the 35%, you're 26%.
That's currently proposed, what would, what would the calculation?
If, you wouldn't do it that way because it is presumed that any issuance of a variance, even if he did nothing with the house, even if he did nothing. I'm assuming it, the, and I think it's well-understood that the apartment goes away within the house. So that apartment presently occupies 1,300 square feet. Once you add that back into the house, you no longer need the relief, and that's the point.
What about, would the client consider moving the driveway parking area to the north side?
I don't know that there has been any consideration of that. I'd be happy to mention it to him, but I don't have an answer for that because we're not really here for that and it's never been raised prior.
And the, Bruce, the apartment that was in the house, was that occupied as for housing?
Yes.
Well, because.
It is a CO apartment of 1,300 square feet.
Your neighbor said that it was never occupied.
Doesn't matter, it's protected by CO anyway.
So you don't really know who's actually occupied.
I don't know who's sleeping where on any given day.
So you have an apartment just where it is, you don't actually need this additional or change of apartments?
No, what I'm saying is, once I remove the apartment.
But you don't have to, you don't have to.
My point is.
You're setting up what the neighbors refer to as a second building on this one lot.
I can have a second building. It's not the building, there's nothing required dimensionally or otherwise that pertains to the building.
And just to be clear, Katie said this before, we asked this of Bruce back in November, December, to come back and do it this way, and he did everything, so I thank you, Bruce. So I would just like everyone to remember that.
I have a question.
Sure.
So where are some of the people that are speaking getting a 1,400 square foot building from, well, I don't see, I don't see anything that indicates that this is 1,400 square feet. There's no dimensions on the, on the survey. There's nothing that I'm seeing in the package that says that this is 1,400 square foot building. So where's that coming from?
Charles, if you could unmute some of the people here on the application.
Hey there, this is Grant Greenberg.
Yes, Grant, can you answer that question about where the, where the statement that this is a 1,400 square foot building is coming from?
Yes, we've seen the plans for the design of the building and it states on the plans that it's 1,400 square feet. It's actually a little bit more than that.
Well, the building inspector is going to see the plans and is going to provide approval for this to be built and we'll see those same plans. So I don't see how a 1,400 square foot building is going to be given approval as a 1,000 square foot building. You know, you gotta, you gotta trust the process a little bit.
I, I, I've been down the road with you guys before and I do trust the process, but I also just want to make sure that everyone is accountable and aware of, of what's being proposed and so that you know what to look out for. I have the plans in front of me right now. The exempt spaces according to the architect are a hall, a bathroom, and then the second bathroom, the, and the attic and, and the kitchen. So those are listed as the exempt spaces. Which seems like, I mean, one other thing to point out is the attic has 10-foot ceilings.
If you, you go, you go to.
I think we.
You'll see 993, that's the architect.
So it seems like we need to get some answers from the building department. Bruce has to answer some questions of the building department, which he will contact the building department on. And what does the board want to do in terms of, this will be Adam's application, he will keep the application. How would the board like to proceed?
I'd like to keep it open and have Bruce come back again with the information from the building.
The information is already before you. It's on the plans, which have been reviewed by the buildings. I can't add any more information, it is already before you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to close, leaving it open for written submissions till 8:3. Anybody out there can sign their written submissions? Go down and talk to Dennis and close with a determination when, Kate.
Well, I'm sorry, you said you were going to keep it open till August 3rd?
No, I made a motion to close, only for written submission. Determination?
I'd say 8:6.
And Mr. Toddell.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Burgess.
No.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Daley.
Hi.
Here both eye. Mr. Toddell, if you can go back to application number two, please.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we're going to second call Raymond Gallagher, 21 Landing Lane, East Quogue, South Kentucky, Tax Map, 900-362-23.
The board has jurisdiction.
Is there anybody here on that application?
Who we waiting on here?
Mr. Gallagher, are you here?
Charles, he emailed me and said that he's on the call.
Okay, but.
I don't know what that means.
All right, we'll move on.
Just wait, just wait.
Yeah, it's like 30 people in, so it takes a minute.
I guess we're having a lot of people calling too, instead of the videos. That makes it harder.
The problem with that is it's just a phone number, so I don't know.
Maybe look for 917-335.
Um, I do have a 917, I have it, okay.
Yeah, hi, I'm on the call.
Yes.
You state your name and address, please.
Hi, Raymond Gallagher, 21 Landing Lane, East Quogue.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good.
I'm applying for a variance from, I have a where we are property lot line backing onto Shinnecock Road. And I'm applying from a variance from 50 feet to 15 feet for a pool.
Katie, could you call a survey up, please?
Yes, sorry.
I don't see it yet.
What's up, can you see it?
No.
No, just see the file that you're selecting, we don't see the certificate still.
Yeah.
How come I can see it?
Because you're, because you're superwoman.
I was all satisfied with myself.
We could see you selecting, oh, there you go. Well, the, the, the only thing about this is that the neighbor right next door has a very similar pool, just, you know, heading, heading north instead of west.
10 yards, you're two street fronts.
Right.
The, what is this, Mr. Gallagher, what's the screening like between you and your neighbors or you and Shinnecock Road?
Well, basically, I'm on, I'm on, I'm at the end turn of Shinnecock Road, by, on the back. He has a, he has a similar sized, similar sized pool, but it would, it would be adjacent in direction. So basically, his, his pool would be to the south side and more to the north.
Right, but the question, Mr. Gallagher, was what is the, what is the coverage for the, for the, the landscaping to, to help hide the pool around the area that you're identifying? Are there trees, are there hedges, are there, what's there?
Currently, my neighbor, my neighbor has planted, has planted trees and we have a fence currently. I, I, my intention would be to plant at least six feet all around. Because of Shinnecock Road, I would be planting probably 10 feet. But we would, we would have a fence and be planted on all sides.
All right, and have you heard from any of your neighbors on this application?
Not, not since we've posted notice, no.
It looks like you have your septic system on the other part of your yard, which would be.
Yeah, my, my, my septic is, is more to the south, is to the southeast.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm covering, I'm covering the requirements on the septic. I just, I just don't have the coverage because of the, the back lot location, the frontage.
Okay. Mr. Daley, do you have a?
I'm good.
Any other board questions?
Do we want to condition the decision or is everybody okay with the testimony?
No, we're going to ask questions first and then we're going to, Mr. Han, you're indicating you might want some screening around the neighboring property and or Shinnecock Road?
Yeah, I mean, if the applicant plans to do it, I say let's just condition.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Jason.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's, Burgess, any questions before we ask if anyone's here from the public? Helen?
No, no question.
Is there anybody here from the public that would like to be heard on the application of 21 Landing Lane, Raymond Gallagher?
I see no hands. So maybe we should ask them to raise their hand if they would like to be un-muted.
Anyone who'd like to, please raise your hand or indicate same so we can unmute you. While we're doing that, Mr. Gallagher, the, the board would, would, what they're asking is if they were to grant approval, would you agree to condition of screening the property lines, you know, with 10-foot arborvitae's or some kind of planting tree?
Yes, the, the intention would be to plant on all three sides anyway. I mean, just for noise and dispersion.
All right, so let's do it.
Well, let's see, have we seen a hand up, Charles?
I see none.
Okay, so that being, matter, it's all yours.
Okay. We'll do closed public hearing, leaving open for written submissions until August 3rd, with a written decision on August 6th. Second.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, Mr. Toddell.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Here both eye, thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, we got Lori, we got Lori out there, right? So with the second call, item three on the agenda, Gregory O'Halloran and Marlene O'Halloran.
Lori is ready to go.
I am.
Amen.
Okay, Lori, please state your name and address.
Lori Wiltshire, 231 Pantico Road, East Hampton.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Share your video?
I'm putting her up now.
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay, great. So I'm sorry about the last round, I actually logged on to a computer that didn't have a microphone and didn't realize it until I couldn't find the unmute button. Anyway, so this application is made in order to utilize an existing outdoor shower on the westerly side of the house and to construct a one-story addition over an existing wood deck on the northeastern part of the house. The property is extremely non-conforming. It's undersized at 8,000 square feet in an R10 zoning district and is very narrow at 50 feet wide where 75 feet is required. These non-conformities create the need for all the requested variances. The existing residence is pre-existing and non-conforming. The existing decking and outdoor shower have been in their current location since before our clients purchased the premises in 1994. They are apparent on the 1994 survey that a. They are apparent on the nineteen ninety-four survey that accompanies the nineteen ninety-four CO. At that point, however, the building department only listed that as a one-story dwelling, single family on the CO, no mention of deck or shower. Um, we are requesting five variances to legalize an outdoor shower that has been in the same location for over twenty-five years, and to build the addition. One variance is one point three feet to allow the shower to remain within the side yard setback, so it's just one point three feet. Uh, two, to allow the shower to remain in the required side yard. Three and four, a five point two foot side yard setback variance and seven hundred and sixty-nine cubic foot pyramid relief to construct the addition. And number five, nine feet of relief from the total side yard where twenty-five feet is required. Granting the requested variances would not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor would it create a detriment to the nearby properties. This lot was created by a subdivision map filed in nineteen thirty-five. Many of the neighboring lots on Wicketuck Drive are similarly non-conforming and have less, have substantially less than the required street frontage such as this property. Many have similar improvements. Also, the addition over the deck can't be seen by the easterly neighbor due to a large, the large conifers, uh, located between the properties and, uh, or by the rear neighbor due to the topography of the area rises steeply, um, to the back. The proposed legalization of the outdoor shower and the proposed addition are compatible with the neighborhood and will not have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions. A variance was granted to fifty-two Wicketuck, four thousand square feet of pyramid, uh, of relief. And relief was granted to fifty-three Wicketuck for a deck to be situated in the side yard setback and in the required side yard, very similar to what we're asking for here. These variances are not unlike those requested in the subject application. That's basically, um, our case in a nutshell.
And have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No one.
I have someone who would like to speak.
So, let's see if there's any, well, let's see what the, let's see. So, please let them in, Charles.
What do we have on the phone?
Is anybody there that wouldn't be heard on this application?
Marlene, unmute yourself.
Oh, Marlene's the applicant, right?
Sorry.
Correct.
Oh, this shit, okay. Then no, then there's no, no other hand.
Um, member of the board, questions, comments, thoughts?
When, when was the shower constructed, and why would?
Twenty-five years ago. It's been there for twenty-five years, hasn't been a problem for twenty-five years, why would it be a problem now?
It was there when our client bought the property.
My, I, I think it's, you know, it's a very constrained lot. Uh, my concern is going to, um, the four point eight feet, and anytime there's less than five feet, you know, between the side of a, a house and a property line or a wall, you mean, the existing five feet, um, the pyramid is, is, is created, you know, based on existing conditions, and it's not a lot of relief from, you know, where this board usually sees granted.
Hang on, Greg.
My only concern would be reducing that side yard down to four eight, uh, I would like to see it remain at five.
Okay, so here's the thing, though, we're following the line of the existing house, so we're not increasing the degree of non-conformity at all.
But you are, because you're going to less.
Going to less?
Yeah, it's at five.
You're currently at five.
And you're going to four point eight.
Well, the house is at four point eight.
Says the house is at five on the survey, and you're proposing four point eight?
No, the four point eight is, um, right where the addition meets the existing house, and as we get further away, it becomes five. The distance becomes five, so it's, it's exactly the same on the south side of the addition and a little bit better at the five feet you're asking for at the far side, at the backside.
If that, I, if that was the case, you're asking for four point eight from five point one, so if the current house was four point eight, you wouldn't need that relief. You're increasing the degree of non-conformity, if you were existing at four point eight, you wouldn't need that relief, and maybe that's something you have to clarify with the building department, but if you're at four point eight, then, you know, I would have a different position, but it, it appears from the write-up in the survey that you're at five and you're going down to four point eight. If that was a mistake, then, you know, we can clarify that.
We can certainly clarify it, but, you know, the survey that I'm looking at, which is what we submitted, shows the exact, where the house, existing house and the addition meet, it's at four point eight feet from the property line. Okay, so that's both the existing house and the addition, and it becomes five feet at, at the, at the rear.
All right, so, so the write-up says the existing setback is five point one one feet. You're proposing a side yard of four point eight, which would indicate you're increasing the degree of non-conformity.
Which write-up are you looking at?
Looking at the agenda and the building.
For the hearing.
For the hearing.
Okay, I don't know where that number of five point one one came from, because it's certainly not on the survey we submitted.
Well, you're right, the survey says five.
Correct. So the relief needed is less than was noticed. So it shouldn't be a problem.
But it says that you are asking for a side yard setback of four point eight feet where five point one one feet is existing.
I don't know where those numbers came from, that was nothing, nothing that we presented to you.
Yeah, I mean, it really, what it looks like is, the, you're saying the deck is at four point eight, Lori?
No, are you looking at the same survey that I am?
I'm gonna show you the survey, I'm sure we're all looking at the same survey.
Okay.
Is that there?
That's the same one I'm, yeah, it's the same one I'm looking at.
All right, so right here it says four point eight.
Right.
And up here it says, and right here it says five.
That's the, the back of the proposed addition.
Okay.
Which is further from the property line than the existing house.
But this whole thing here is new, right?
Correct.
Okay, so they're saying this, this whole addition is gonna be a four, oh, I see what you're saying, this should, you're saying this four point eight should be continued?
No, it, it, as it moves further back, it gets further from the property line.
Then you.
Because the house, the house isn't exactly square, you know what I'm saying? Okay, can, I, I'm sorry, Lori, Lori is Candace, how are you?
Good.
I just wanna, I, I think I might have a little bit clarification, who did the survey that's currently on the screen? Uh, this is by Twin Forks Land Survey. Okay, um, you might just want to talk to the building department, it could be a difference in the surveyors. Um, the five point one one came from a nineteen ninety-four survey, when they issued a pre-existing CO. Um, and that survey has been in the system since then. It was also used when they issued a CO for the shed in two thousand and one. That survey has a side yard setback of five point one one. I don't know where the survey got four point eight, but it could be a difference in the surveyors. Okay, but if we use the current survey, then we're not make, the, the addition is not becoming, is not any more, not, it, it's not more non-conforming than the existing house. So I'm not sure why we have to go all the way back to there if what we're asking for in terms of relief is less than what was noticed.
Well, because what was built and what's on the survey is not consistent with what we have.
But I think we have to go with the current survey, we can't rely on a twenty-year-old survey.
Maybe, but you still need relief, you need relief to legalize it, since it's not, uh, since it's not, it's consistent with the CO, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, you're saying we can't possibly move it, because this is where it exists.
Correct.
I, I'm looking for clarification on that from the building department, if, if it exists there, we're continuing or, or increasing the degree of non-conformity, I'm okay. If we're not, and we're increasing that degree of non-conformity, as the write-up is, and I acknowledge that may be incorrect, because we're looking at different surveys, uh, I will just need clarification on that.
And who would seek that?
You.
You would have to, with the building department.
I understand. You got it.
Um, I as well, I'm not, uh, not in support of increasing, um, you know, non, non-conformity, and for me, just building a second-story addition, which is going to be requiring significantly additional pyramid relief, at a.
There's no second story.
One story, Michael.
Proposed one story, oh, over wood deck, okay, forgive me, all right.
So the, the pyramid relief is not increasing more than what's already encroaching, and the setback relief is not increasing more than what's already encroaching into the setback?
Hold on, the pyramid relief's going up, because you're building a one-story addition there.
Yeah, but, I mean, it, if we hold the line of the existing house, it's gonna be the same. There's already a pyramid encroachment from the existing house that's largely.
Nine hundred eighty-eight, nine hundred eighty-eight cubic feet is already existing.
And we're proposing seven hundred.
And the proposed is seven sixty.
Another seven hundred sixty-eight.
Right. Correct.
Five steps from the property line.
And it's a constrained lot, too.
Gary? I think we need to, well, this is my application still, I'm gonna need clarity on the, on the surveys, so, I would make a motion to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until August 3rd, a decision on August 6th. Uh, just know that increasing the degree of non-conformity, that I am not in support of that, so you need to work that out with the building.
Nor am I.
Okay, I mean, I don't believe that's what we're asking for, so I think that, um, if we can get Dennis to confirm that that is, we're not increasing the non-conformity, then that would be.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be my motion.
So, second.
Okay, Mr. Tuttle?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Here both eye, bye, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, too.
Item five on the agenda is 313 Dune Road LLC, 313. Bridgehampton, South of County Tax Map, 900-179-226.7. Applicant request for leave from town code section.
Hey, Greg. I know.
Notification of Administrator to allow existing geotextile cubes to remain on the subject property where a time period.
I have another hearing on it, too.
Okay, Lori, mute yourself.
Oh. All right, I, yeah.
All right, where a time period for the undertaking of emergency activity shall not exceed six months and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction, we should have John Bennett, maybe Bailey Larkin.
One second. Get there. And Tony P.
I don't know, that says case number fifteen.
Oh, sorry, sorry, that's my phone. All right, John Bennett. Think John's coming. Oh, wrong, David Bennett. Wow, this is different. One second.
Brian, should we recall this case?
No, let's just wait a second.
Okay, John is coming in.
Mr. Benson, we don't have to swear you in, we'll presume you'll tell the truth tonight, so tell it while you're here.
I always tell the truth. As brutal as it can sometimes be.
Oh, John.
Please.
Your hair's messed up, John.
Say again?
Your hair is messed up.
Tried to. Should I proceed?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, um, this is a property, it's an oceanfront parcel on the south side of Dune Road in Bridgehampton, and there's a house, existing house residence, a pool, terrace, and a detached garage and pool house. The property's in a non-conforming location with respect to dune crest setbacks, and it's located south of the coastal erosion hazard line, and uh, back in twenty twelve, the prior owner of the property, uh, obtained a, a coastal erosion management permit to allow beach stabilization through the installation of some, uh, some geo cubes. Uh, I, I, I wanna be quick to add geo cubes, not geo tubes, that's important. Uh, geo tubes have been seen to be problematic, not so much with geo, geo cubes. Um, these geo cubes and the should, the permit, we gave you a copy of the permit, which I think Arum obtained, I could be wrong. Yeah, back, uh, first coastal, uh, allowed the tubes to be installed in tiers. Uh, they're currently sit about ten feet seaward of the, uh, house. And then the permit required that the tubes be covered with, uh, beach-compatible sand and fully vegetated with beach grass, um, so we, um, submitted a copy of the permit. Again, those cubes sit about ten feet from the, uh, from the house. We also submitted, and this is fairly critical, because this was noted, uh, in, uh, Jana Scherer's, uh, report, uh, which I hope you have, um, she, Jana submitted a report stating, in so many words, that she has no opposition to the, uh, to the relief requested with, with the, the suggestion for a condition. But she noted that, as you can see in the photographs, hopefully you have them, this is a heavily vegetated dune, uh, at this point. Um, it's been, that's because the geo cubes have been there, uh, for seven years. Uh, interestingly, back in, let me make sure I give you the date. Uh, the town board actually, prior to my client's purchasing of the property, the town board actually had required a, a performance bond to, uh, guarantee the removal of the, of the cubes, but they released, uh, the town board released the prior owner, Jeff Blau, from this obligation, um, uh, without any, any further requirements. I, I think it's probably fair to say that there was, uh, some movement going on by the then supervisor to allow these things in this, in this area, some, talk about some legislation to allow, um, these geo cubes to be permitted. But that, uh, legislation never materialized, uh, and thus the, the application. So again, the, the owners down there had been, it'd been indicated to them by the prior administration of the town that they were working on some legislation to allow these things to remain, that never materialized, I think this is probably the first of the applications, uh, in order to request just that, which is to, uh, allow the geo cubes to be, remain where they are, uh, I think it's pretty clear from the photographs that there's significant vegetation located directly south of the client's residence. It's a big dune that's been created there. The geo cubes are under the first part of, first ten feet from the house. Um, and, um, to remove the existing geo cubes would require excavation of the dune, bring in more fill, new vegetation established, which of course, uh, one of the things great about beach grass is that the longer it's there, the more it stabilizes the dune, which is an important factor. Um, so, to remove these cubes would, you'd disrupt the entire existing dune. And that would cause an unnecessary, an undesirable, uh, change, um, for no reason. In, uh, a page, the third page of Jana Shear's, uh, June. In, uh, a page, the third page of Jana Shear's, uh, June twenty-six, twenty-twenty recommendation, she said, uh, "This is the town Coastal Erosion Administrator." That's the person who is in charge of administering the Coastal Erosion Hazard Law for the town of Southampton. "I do not object to providing relief in allowing the applicant to retain the geo cube sands, sand cubes in place at this time." Now, uh, but all, obviously the town wants to keep control over this situation. So in our letter, and, and Jana so indicated, so in our letter of July, well, I guess it's July 2nd, is that today? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we, uh, suggested that we would agree to file a covenant stating, "Should the condition of the dune change and such change cannot be remediated through the issue, issuance, excuse me, of an additional coastal erosion permit, the geo cubes would be removed at the owner's expense." So that gives the town control over it, that the situation is changed and cannot be remediated by an additional coastal erosion permit. We would obviously work out notice language, uh, with, uh, with Katie on that, uh, to make sure that there was appropriate notice. Um, and it would also give, speaking of notice, uh, it would give notice to any future, um, owner, although, uh, my client has no indication to sell this, loves the property, just wants it maintained and protected as well as the dune. Uh, unnecessary disruption of habitat, a dune, a well-established beach grass and dune grass, I don't think it serves any purpose. I think it's fortunate that the coastal erosion, uh, permit administrators reached the same conclusion. We're willing to covenant, um, that if there is an issue, we'd have to go back, seek a coastal erosion manage permit, and if that doesn't work, uh, remove the cubes. Uh, type-two action.
John, just to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so basically my understanding of that would be that if there were another superstorm and these were exposed, at that point, they could be removed or a new permit would have to be issued.
Well, either they would be removed or on good, on good cause shown, they, you know, the dune would be revegetated. Maybe that would be part of it, but it's still, I've got to go, I would have to go back hat in hand and work it out with.
But that would be the event, that would be the event contemplated in the covenant that would trigger the removal. So if the dune was erased and these were exposed, because we don't want you to dig up a dune now. But if they were exposed by natural forces, at that point, you'd seek a new permit or the town could notify you to remove. And that's what your client would agree to.
Well, no, what we would do is we would seek a new permit, and if it couldn't, the situation couldn't be remediated by the permit, i.e. the town is not of the opinion that the, that they can, can stay there as a, as a result of the, of the, its response to the, uh, of the new permit, then we would have to remove them. I, I, I don't, yeah, that's, yeah.
You heard from any of the neighbors? Or I presume some of the neighbors have the same and will be seeing them shortly.
I, I haven't heard from any of the neighbors, but a little bit of knowledge down there. I'd be surprised, just candidly, if they had any objection, but we'll find out. I, you know, there are a lot of the neighbors, including a, a couple of my clients who, um, I think are in a situation, they had, they still have the bonds there, some of them.
It would make sense to me that we don't want to destroy the dune that's been established there now, which would be consistent with what Jana says, but, um, maybe not to cut John off, but if the board has any questions, if not, maybe we could see if there's anybody here from the public. Okay, Charles, can you see if anybody's here, please?
I have no hands.
Okay. Questions from the board. My thought would be that I'm okay with the application. Um, condition on the covenant that, that John spoke about, that would be worked out between, uh, John and Katie at the town attorney's office as to, uh, what would be filed and how that would be filed, uh, for the instance that we just discussed previously.
I concur with, I concur with you, Brian.
I concur as well.
Let's rock.
I, I, I agree.
All right. Seeing and hearing no one. Motion to close. Determination on eight-six.
Written record has been opened until August 3rd, and then the decision.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Tuttle?
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Here it goes, hi. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Have a great fourth, everyone.
You too, John.
Buy yourself a cone, John.
A cone? Oh, okay, thanks. Thanks for giving me the permission.
All right. Item, uh, item number six on the agenda is PO Box seventy-four LLC, 115 Corworth Avenue in Bridgehampton, South County Tax Map 900-69-3-4. Applicant Requesting Relief From Town Code 330-84D Pyramid Height For A Proposed Encroachment In The Amount Of 1,101 Cubic Feet To Allow The Roof Of An Existing One-Story Dwelling To Be Raised On A Non-Conforming Lot And Any Other Relief Necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. This is Wayne, Wayne Bruin.
Wayne Bruin. We have Wayne.
One, one second.
She's still on the golf course or what?
There you go, Wayne. Sorry.
Hey, Wayne.
Sorry about that. Hey, can you turn your sound up a little?
You did want us to hear him say four.
Yeah. Unmute. There you go.
Uh, Katie, we have jurisdiction.
Yes, we do. The board has jurisdiction.
Very good. Wayne, uh, please tell us.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, folks. As the notice indicates, I do want to make a correction about the amount of area that's being requested. But, uh, first of all, the premises on the easterly side of Corworth Avenue, approximately three hundred and eighty feet south of Maple Lane in the hamlet of Bridgehampton. The parcel is a nineteen thousand square foot parcel, uh, located in the R twenty zoning district. As you notice on the survey, it's approximately seventy-seven feet in width. Um, the zoning board back in the early, uh, nineteen sixty-eight actually created this parcel by variance and gave necessary lot width and, and setback, uh, side yard setbacks to allow this dwelling to be constructed. The lot that it was created from was the, the parcel to the south. Uh, the parcel to the north is owned by the town of Southampton, and it's the current Bridgehampton Highway Yard. Um, the board may remember this, uh, property. We were in front of the board for a front yard variance and we granted relief to allow a front porch, uh, which is shown on this survey. That was granted in October. Um, we're here tonight because, uh, after my client, in two thousand and eighteen, they had submitted a building permit application for the cool house and the pool and the outdoor shower, but also a mudroom addition on the front of the, the house enclosing what was part of the front, uh, porch, the existing, and enclosed that area. And, and then, um, also a rear addition. Um, and they were under, uh, construction on all that. And, and then, um, we needed to come in and get the front yard porch variance, which we got. And then in December, they made application to the building department. In early January, the building department realized that, uh, the, uh, front porch addition may need, uh, pyramid relief. And then upon further review, we found that the rear yard, uh, rear addition, which they had previously given, also needed pyramid relief. The reason is that the setbacks for the existing dwelling are, uh, literally ten point six feet and twelve point seven feet, respectively. Um, so the relief that's being asked for, we provided pyramid drawings, is actually in the, the amount of seven hundred forty-five point five cubic feet. And, and what is listed on the, uh, notice is a thousand, uh, plus square feet. But that is taken into account, the existing dwelling already encroaches by three hundred fifty-five cubic feet.
So the new, the, the seven hundred, Wayne, is including three hundred or plus three hundred?
No. So the, the, the existing dwelling encroaches both on a little bit on the north side and the south side by three hundred and fifty-five cubic feet. So the, but what has happened here with the additions, there was also an increase of the floor, the, the roof peak by approximately two and a half to three feet. And, and as a result of that, that has increased the volume of pyramid encroachment by seven hundred forty-five point five cubic feet. So the, the end result will be one thousand one hundred and one cubic feet that the dwelling would encroach on the pyramid. But the actual relief above and beyond what's existing is only seven hundred forty-five point five. And of that, four hundred and eleven is on the, the northerly portion and three hundred and thirty-four, three hundred and thirty-five approximately, and, uh, along the southern portion of the roof.
And the northerly portion again is the highway department yard.
Yeah, adjoining the north is the highway yard, adjoining the south is, uh, almost an identical lot that was built, um, and, and, and built. Um, this dwelling is a, a single-family dwelling. We provided information in our petition to show that this is one of the few single, uh, one-story dwellings. Um, many of the dwellings are one and a half or two stories along, um, Corworth Avenue and in the nearby vicinity. Uh, in addition, um, we did provide you with, uh, other information on the character of the area of the property immediately across the street. It's, it's preserved farmland, open farmland. So the, the most impacted, uh, property is the dwelling to the south, which is already, uh, expanded as well and encroaching.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
We have not heard anybody. In, in the first application, we didn't hear anybody. Um, in the second application, we have not heard from anybody. We also provided, um, the board with copies of at least seven decisions that in, in proximity within the, you know, uh, less than a half mile, all in Bridgehampton, where you've granted similar or much greater relief, uh, due to the same kind of similarly situated lots. Many of these lots, um, are on these narrow lots, uh, in Bridgehampton and, uh, a few existing houses. The house, uh, you have the plans, uh, it, it all, it has actually, most of it's been restructured already, uh, reshingled, everything is, is brought up to and, and keeping new lawn. It's, uh, a much better upgrade than the house.
Modest for that area with, with smaller houses and, you know, tighter lots and, uh, I, I'm okay with the application. I think it fits into the neighborhood. It, it seems to make sense, um, what the development standpoint is and everything going on in that area of Bridgehampton. Um, it is modest relief, which was previously granted in that area. Does the board have any other questions? And then we can see if the, anyone from the public is here. No. Okay.
I have none. I have none. No, no hands.
No question.
Okay. So. Go ahead, go for it.
Uh, we'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until August 3rd with a decision on eight-six.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Han.
Hi.
Daley.
Hi.
Burgess.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Tuttle.
Hi.
Here it goes, hi. Thank you, Wayne. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I'll be here for, uh, one later.
See you then.
Number seven.
All right. Number seven on the agenda is OPH Building Corp., thirty Linda Lane in New York, South County Tax Map 900-17-2-77. We already have jurisdiction. This is Hal Dogg.
Somebody here on the application?
I think so. Coming now.
Hello, this is Kieran.
Hi, Kieran.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
Can you share your video? There we go.
Okay, good. Hi. Kieran Page Murphy, I'm the attorney. Um, this property is located on the corner of Linda Lane and, uh, Peninsula Drive in, uh, Sag Harbor. It's a corner lot, so it has frontage on both streets. There's ninety-eight feet on Peninsula and a hundred and seventy-seven feet on Linda Lane. It contains twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square feet and is located in the R twenty zone and is part of a subdivision known as Turtle Cove filed in nineteen sixty-four. And it's been held in single and separate ownership, as shown on the abstract that was submitted with the application. The subject property is entitled to C Residence Zoning. The lot is unique that it has two front yards. The year, the rear yard is opposite Peninsula Drive. The property narrows at the rear down to seventy-one feet. As a result of that and the two front yards, the applicant is requesting relief from the pyramid law and front yard setback relief for the garage, as well as rear yard relief for this garage. The proposed house and detached garage are consistent with the development in the area. Most of the, most of the houses in this area were built in the late nineteen sixties and early nineteen seventies. The relief requested for pyramid relief is for the dwelling in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five point fifty-five cubic feet on the east side. And relief for the garage in the amount of one thousand and nine cubic feet for, up for the east side. That's the pyramid relief. The garage meets the side and rear yard setbacks, but not the required front yard setback of fifty feet from Linda Lane. The applicant is asking for a reduction to thirty-nine point four-six feet. A reduction of approximately twenty-one percent for the garage. And it's allow, you know, it's being designed to allow, uh, an entrance from, you know, it's a distance from the intersection of Linda Lane and Peninsula Drive. The rear yard, because of the two front yards and the narrowing of the lot, is very constrained. It amounts to only one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. The proposed garage will occupy five hundred and twenty-eight square feet or twenty-eight point two percent of the rear yard, using the required setback from the rear yard property line for the C District. And I think in the corner of the survey, they show, um, the, the difference. It's, 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 it's down near the bottom to the left. That's for the C District. Yeah, you can see right here, stop, over to the left there. There's two, uh, areas. That's showing the C District rear yard. Um, if you calculate it on the basis of the R twenty, the existing zone, which requires a sixty-foot rear yard, the coverage would be amount to twenty-two point six-nine percent. But these two alternatives are shown on the survey submitted, which I'm showing you the difference. There are two adjourned properties, one to the east and one to the north. And I had submitted an aerial yesterday, but more from my own, but we'll stick with the survey. The neighbor located adjacent to the property to the north, De Lorenzo, wrote a letter objecting to the applicant. So this is the residence that is lot thirty, I guess, right behind. And the letter had two components to it. One, the distance of the proposed house and garage from her property. First of all, the structures meet the setbacks required by both the R twenty district and the C Residence District, except for the front yard setback to Linda Lane for the garage. This relief will have no effect on the De Lorenzo property. Second, um, this neighbor wrote that she points to a variance application for the property adjacent to the east and claims, "We are asking for similar relief," as that application, which she said was denied. To begin with, that application was withdrawn, not denied. In addition, that application was to allow habitable space in a five hundred-plus square foot third floor. As you know, third-story structures are not permitted by the town court, nor are they allowed by the New York State Building Code without a variance in subject installation of sprinklers. So that's not really relevant. The neighbor across, directly across, um, The neighbor across, directly across Linda Lane, yes, Blackland, also called to express concern, if not opposition, to the application. The application before you does not ask for relief for the main residence from Linda Lane, but only for the garage. The distance to Linda Lane is exactly what the McClaren's have. The relief is not substantial, and the placement of the garage maintains appropriate setback from the easterly neighbor. The one most affected by this application, although the property has a pool located fourteen feet from the property line, is, you know, the neighbor directly to the east. In addition, the size of the proposed garage falls within the allowable twenty-five percent of the main dwelling. Lastly, the property will require the installation of the new I A O S W T S sanitary system as it is within a priority area. So it's going to have the latest sanitary system. The benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood community. You can see that, you know, there are many houses that have similar situated on the property. Required development of the property will not result in any detriment to nearby properties. Due to the the two front yards on this property, the property, you know, the proposed development cannot be achieved by any feasible method. The proposed variance will not have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, and especially since we would be putting in the latest sanitary system. The difficulty was not self-created, but rather results from the property having two front yards. So I respectfully request that you grant these variances.
Thank you. And and so do we, we need to do a little different, see if we would hear from anyone from the public first, and then we'll go to board comments once we hear, if there is anybody from the public. Thank you.
I have no hands.
No hands. So let's give it a minute, and if there's no hands, we'll go on to board questions.
No hands.
Okay. My only question was, if you slid the garage a little closer to the street, would that reduce, and we granted you more relief from the street, would that reduce the pyramid for the garage? Or is that something that the applicant would consider?
So the drive, you want the garage closer?
I'm just asking if that would help with the pyramid a little bit, because that was where you had said the neighbor had a little concern. So if we moved it a little further away, you know, we, I I think, just as a thought, I don't know how other members.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that, you know, would would.
I'm not saying against the street.
Yeah, it's the garage. I mean, yeah, I think it could be a little closer. I could suggest that to the client, and do you have a specific?
I mean, I don't know how the board feels.
Reduce the pyramid you're talking about, yeah, to reduce the pyramid.
Is this by sliding it away maybe five feet from each each corner? And then, you know, just to reduce that a little bit.
Okay, then, would that, five feet from each corner? Yeah, I mean, that's something we could, we could consider.
Just reduce that to the garage, and then if it, you know, with the concern from the neighbor, I think, I'm okay with the application. I think it's a very constrained lot, a lot of relief has been granted over there. It's not a lot of pyramid, but if, you know, if we can do anything to address a concern of the neighbor that, you know, thank you for bringing that up, just to, you know, so we can try to work things out, and that would be my only suggestion, but I'm okay with the application.
Okay, yeah, no, I will, I I think five feet is reasonable, but I have to, you know, get the client's consult.
Not saying it's fatal, I'm just.
Probably wouldn't have a problem with it, it's only five feet from each corner. So I don't see that being a problem, but you know, I I'll just.
No, and then if if they wanted to later, they could always plan something, they would just give them space for that. So the five and the five, my thought, I'm not looking for that now. I don't know what other members think, I just think five and five might help with the amount of relief it would be reduced, and and the relief from the street is not harming anybody, in my opinion.
Right. Okay.
So Brian, you're saying move the garage five feet closer to the street and five feet further away from the the neighbor?
Yeah, the setbacks instead of ten and ten, they'd be fifteen and fifteen, and then the distance from the street would probably be like thirty-four-ish.
Yeah, thirty-four. Yeah, that that seems, yeah.
I agree, that would be preferable.
Because then it would still give enough to park two cars in the driveway, just not to put cars in the street, but it would give the neighbor a little bit extra.
I agree.
Anyone else have any?
I think, I think.
Seems like a reasonable request. I agree.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Kieran. Michael, it's yours.
It's mine?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will, I didn't have the file in front of me. So we will, we want to wait for just written submissions? We want to close and wait for written submissions? Or would that be advisable at this point? Okay.
I think we'll keep it open till August third anyway, under the new order we're doing.
We'll close the public hearing, except for written submissions until, is August third enough time for you to send us a redrawn plan?
Yes, I believe, I, yes.
Okay, good. So we'll keep the written submissions open till August third with a decision on August sixth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Bailey.
Thank you. Happy Fourth of July.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
John.
Sorry.
Aye.
Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Hereabouts, aye. Thank you, Kieran, have a wonderful Fourth of July.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye. Okay, number twelve, Mr. Tuttle.
What are you doing about eleven?
Eleven, sorry.
He doesn't like number eleven.
Eleven, James and Phil's Garrido, twenty-nine Ocean View Drive, Seneca Kills. Nine hundred dash two seventy-one dash one dash twenty-seven.
Anybody here on number eleven, twenty-nine Ocean View Drive?
Yes. Wait.
I heard somebody.
Mr. Garrido?
James Garrido. Charles, you can unmute him.
Yep.
There we go. Mr. Garrido, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, there you go.
Sir, are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay, please state your name and address, please.
James Garrido, twenty-nine Ocean View Drive, South Hampton.
You swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Please tell us why you're here.
Want to put on a master bedroom over the garage, over existing garage, you want to put a master bedroom, and I want to put access to an existing roof deck from inside the house, so I need a landing to get out onto the, onto the roof deck, and it infringes on the the pyramid law a little bit.
Okay, and Katie, can you pull the survey up so we can just take a look at that? And?
He's looking for thirty-two hundred and fifty cubic feet of relief.
No, no, we resubmitted, we cut it down. My architect, which I should be here, I'm a lawyer, I don't know why they aren't, but we we were asked to resubmit, and we cut it back to like twenty, I want to say twenty-four hundred cubic feet.
Correct.
Just enough for a landing and storage for out, for the, for the roof deck furniture.
What is the encroachment now?
Twenty-four hundred, Alan.
Twenty-four hundred?
Yep, that's the testimony we've received.
Well, no, that's, that's the total cubic, the cubic footage. I don't, I I believe we're under, I don't, I don't have the drawings in front of me. Yeah, excuse me, because I only have my iPad. I can't, I can't bring up the drawings and talk to you guys. But I want to say we're, I want to say it's like four, four hundred cubic feet or five hundred cubic feet. I don't have the numbers in front of me, unfortunately, that that were infringing on the pyramid law.
Katie, do you see those numbers? I just don't see a revised number in front of my, all my material, that it was reduced.
Nope. Candace, do you have any revised numbers?
There were, there were revised drawings that were submitted back when.
Let me take a look, give me one second.
Okay, we're going to work with you, just give us one second.
Yeah, no problem. Me too, I'm going to try to reach out and find out where my my guys are.
Is your architect coming, Mr. Merito?
They were, he was supposed to.
All right, so you're talking about twenty-four hundred square foot house, but you you think you need four, five hundred cubic feet of relief? That's it.
And have you heard from any of your neighbors? I can ask you that while we're.
Yes, my neighbor, right adjacent to where I want my garage, gave me a letter, a letter of approval. There we go, there's my architect.
Do you guys in the same room?
No, we're at different locations.
Got some crazy music on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay, sorry, I just had trouble getting on. Michael Macrina, architect, twenty-one Main Street, Stony Brook.
Did you swear in last time?
We did, but we swore in last time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. We know the plan for reduced the amount of pyramid relief. Can you tell us what the revised amount of pyramid relief is?
It's, I got it right here, twenty, sorry. It's two thousand four hundred and seventy-five cubic feet. It's a thirty percent reduction from what we had previously.
No, that's, Mike, that's the total cubic footage, not the, what's the relief of the pyramid law?
That's it, that's it.
That was it? Yep. Okay, I mean, that's, you you've been responsive, in my opinion, to what we were asking for. The most impacted neighbor is in support, so we, I I appreciate the effort in terms of the reduction. How does the rest of the board feel?
Okay.
I think it's a reasonable reduction, and so I'm in favor of it.
All right, so he wants twenty-four hundred cubic feet of relief versus thirty-two fifty. It's a nice reduction. Do we have anything on paper? Candace, do we have anything showing that or what?
Yes, yes, we do. I was. I got it, Michael. I was waiting for him to finish speaking, yes. We have, Mike, just make sure I have the right ones. The ones I have is last dated April first.
That's correct.
Twenty-four seventy-five cubic feet.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, I have them in the file.
Okay.
Are you, so you're going to be disturbing the ground in that area on that location, is that right?
Just, just slightly in front of the existing garage, nothing on the side, I'm not going out, just slightly in.
Yeah, it's approximately like four feet by sixteen foot addition in the front of the garage, just to expand the garage.
I have no problem, he's got letters of support. I have no problem.
Thank you. Charles, if we could see if anybody's here to speak on the application or has a hand up.
I see none.
Very good, seeing or hearing no one. Keith, it's yours.
We'll see now, Charles didn't see or hear anybody. I'm good to close with a determination on eight six, written submissions to eight three.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Hereabouts, aye. Thank you, have a good evening and a good, good weekend, guys.
You too, thank you very much.
Happy Fourth of July.
Adam Twelv on the agenda is Christopher Norwood, Seven Right of Way off New York Substate Tax Map nine hundred dash five dash two dash thirty-one.
Okay, is there someone here on the application?
This is Lori Wiltshire again, Land Planning Services.
Were you sworn in last time on this application?
I was.
Okay, you still sworn in today? Tell us why you're here.
Just to bring you up to date. So you know, we had a hearing on this back in December. The matter was held over pending confirmation from the building department that the second story apartment in the garage was a legal pre-existing non-conforming structure. On May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty, the building department issued certificate of occupancy, C two hundred one twenty-nine, covering a single-family, one-story dwelling, deck, shed, detached, two-story garage with accessory apartment. Garage is included for zoning purposes subject to building and electrical permits to remediate fire damage. One variance request is to legalize the fifty percent expansion of the pre-existing apartment by converting half of the garage below the apartment to living area. Total area will increase by two hundred and eight square feet. As shown on the plans, the bathroom will now be relocated upstairs near the bedroom, where there is a bedroom and a study. The ground floor will contain the kitchen and living room, and with a one-car garage taking up the other half of the space. There will be no increase to the footprint of the building. The only change from the exterior will be that the building will no longer be an unsightly fire-damaged structure, but rather a nice-looking garage apartment structure. Second, we are asking for two accessory setback variances for the existing deck off of the garage apartment as follows. A three-point-four-foot accessory side yard setback variance to allow the deck to remain four-point-six feet from the northeastern property line, where eight feet is required, and a five-point-three-foot accessory rear yard setback variance for the deck to remain two-point-seven feet from the rear lot line, where eight feet is required. The wood deck is more of a platform at only eight, eight inches above grade. While it is close to the side yard property line, there's a picket and stockade fencing separating the neighbor's property from the subject lot right where the deck is located. This property is severely undersized for an R-ten district at less than half of the required square footage. It is also non-conforming as to width at fifty feet, where seventy feet is required, which helped create the need for the deck variances.
Okay, so I know we were waiting on the CFO, which was good that we obtained that. Have you heard from any neighbors?
We got three letters of support to help affidavits from neighbors, basically attesting to the fact that this apartment's been there for many, many, many years. In fact, some of them wrote that it predated the house itself. And they were all very much in favor of, there was three, three letters, and they were all in favor of getting a building permit to get this thing cleaned up and letting the gal that used to live upstairs move back in before the fire.
And are you rebuilding the whole building, or they're renovating what's there?
We're renovating what's there.
Does the board have questions or comments for Lori?
Lori, do we, do we have all the numbers on the expansion of the non-conforming use?
Two hundred and eight square feet.
I know, do we have plans and all that that just shows, you know?
Yeah, they're in the file.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I mean, Candace, you want to confirm that, that we submitted them?
Say it again for me, Lori.
Katie's just asking if you have plans of the garage apartment and its expansion and the square footage. I said we submitted them, so they're, they should be in the file.
Um, Katie, I'll, I'll check it, I can't do it right now, it's a pretty big file, but I'll check it and let you know if we need anything, Lori, I'll contact you and let you know.
Great, thank you.
What, Lori, what does it make the size of the accessory apartment total?
Well, if, roughly speaking, it's four hundred up, four hundred down, so it's going to end up being six hundred and eight square feet. And it was rented to a local gal, even though it wasn't required to be, because it's pre-existing and non-conforming.
I'd like to see if anybody's here. So Charles, if we could see if anybody's here to speak on the application. This is the application of Seven Right of Way, New York Avenue.
I have no hands.
Go ahead.
Good. No hands.
I'd like to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions till August third, have a decision on August sixth.
Zach, guys.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Hereabouts, aye. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks very much, everyone, have a good Fourth. Thanks very much, everyone. Have a good fourth.
Break time?
No.
Three applications left.
Very true.
Item 13 on the agenda is Old Quag Development LLC, 90 Old Quag Road in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-139-3-34.
Is there somebody here on that application?
Yes.
You said yes, Charles?
Yep. She's there.
Sorry about that, I went through the whole thing and I wasn't unmuted. Patricia Stern for Old Quag Development, 110 Lake Avenue South, Suite 46, Wisconsin, New York, 11767.
And were you sworn in last time you were here on this application?
I'm an attorney.
Okay, very good.
So we asked for another hearing date because we've been kind of hanging out there trying to put it all together for you. This was a determination that the building department had incorrectly denied an application for a letter of correction on the CEU to include the use of the garage on the property for the repair of motor vehicles for service to the public. And there was a question as to why all the documents that we had previously submitted referenced that the public garage was located on 94 Old Quag Road when the address is now 90 Old Quag Road. So in the interim, we were able to put together tax records from the application for the CEU on what is now 94 Old Quag Road, which shows that back beginning in 1935, both lots were known as 94 Old Quag Road. And the deed in 1985, 495-5 Old Quag Road encompasses both properties and the tax information says it is for two parcels. We're also trying to put together an affidavit from the brother of the garage owner who passed away that says that at the time that his brother owned the property, it was known as 94 Old Quag Road. Unfortunately, because of his age and COVID, we haven't been able to put that together. But we do have plans tomorrow to have him sign, so we're asking for two weeks to put in that affidavit.
But that's not going to be a problem. We've decided to keep all hearings open for written submissions till August 3rd. Just with COVID and with everything going on in remote meetings, we're giving people an opportunity if they couldn't make the meeting or to be heard. All applications, not just yours.
Okay, great.
That'll be very helpful for us.
I was the one that was wondering about the addresses, though. Can you just tell me what, based on what you submitted today, what suggests that it's...
Well, if you look at the... Hi, Katie. If you look at the tax bills at the bottom of the submission, it'll show you on the top tax, you know, the tax pages, tax cards from the tax assessor's office. It says by deed dated July 16th, 1984, it encompassed two parcels. And I'll get that deed for you and the legal description will show you that it covers both the properties. And that is for 90, that's tax information for 94 Old Quag Road.
Okay, so, but in this whole package, this is the only thing that really talks about that, right? I mean, the other things were affidavits for what was on 94.
Right, yes, absolutely. I just, it was one package that we got from the town in a FOIL request, so I submitted everything.
Okay, and then you think you're going to get an affidavit? Because that's, I mean, you know, just to refresh the board's memory on this, there was a lot of information that was submitted to show that there is a pre-existing use. It just was impossible to identify it as being on 90. Everything talked about 94. I mean, every, everything talked about 94. That, you know, at the last hearing, there was testimony that there was a subdivision, but there is no subdivision of this. I mean, maybe they were separated by deed, and maybe that's what you're saying?
They were definitely separated by deed. I don't know the history regarding the actual subdivision. We tried to find those records from the town, we couldn't. You know, my client is not the one that did that. He bought the property, you know, a couple of decades after the subdivision was done, so.
Okay, so maybe what you could do when you get that affidavit is just put it in your own, you know, you make the statement. You know, this is the history of it, because it's a jump, it's a jump, you know, I don't want to make that statement. You know, if you're satisfied with it based on the deed and based on the affidavit, if you could just put that in writing, that would be helpful.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, I think that helps clear things up and we'll get that additional affidavit from you, which would be helpful in our determination. Let's see if there's anybody here from the public that would like to be heard on the application of 90 Old Quag Road. Charles, is there anybody here or a hand up?
I have no hands.
Okay. And then that being the case, Adam is the lead. He will remain the lead on this application. I would make a motion to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions through August 3rd. Determination on what date, Katie?
August 6th, you know, if we get it, you know, well before August 3rd, it would be helpful.
Yeah, if you get it to us early, we could have a decision prepared for the 6th. Comes in late, it'll be delayed. That would be my motion on behalf of Adam.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Han.
Hi.
Mr. Tuttel.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daley. Mr. Daley.
I said aye.
Okay.
You have a good evening.
Alright, thank you, have a good weekend.
You too.
Item 14 on the agenda is BH680 LLC, Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map 900-67-1-6.5.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin on behalf of BH680 LLC. This was held over from your meeting on May 21st. If you recall, this is property at the corner of Halsey Cook Lane and Scuttle Hole Road. What the applicant is seeking is necessary area variance to create a lot that is 43,382 square feet in the CR80 zone. And the conditions the client is proposing is, if you see Lot 2 on the map that is shown on the screen, has a dwelling that is considered historically significant from the town's perspective. We provided you with copies and reports from the Landmarks Board. We also advised that we were in midst of a pre-application process with the planning board. Basically, the record was kept open so that we could provide reports. On early June, shortly after the meeting, the board had, the planning board on May 28th, adopted their pre-application report. In their report, they supported the act, well, they said they had no objections basically to obtaining the variance. They didn't express any, and more importantly, they did indicate that they had no objection to the zoning board assuming lead agency status under. The second set of report was that on January 6th, the Landmarks and Historics Board also prepared a letter, and you should have in your files, directing it to the board, basically supporting the designation of the dwelling on Lot 2 as a historic landmark. The entire theory here is that but for this board's ability under the 330-167J of the code, which allows this board to grant relief for threatening historic structures, it gives this board to grant what ordinarily would be extraordinary relief to create a lot of this size. Generally speaking, we presented the character of the area, lots being similar or smaller in size to the opposite side of Scuttle Hole Road. We did receive comments from one of the owners to the north was suggesting that the zoning board or the town acquire the development rights off of what would be Lot 1. Despite that, this property was once part of a larger farm parcel where the development rights were actually acquired, significantly preserving a good portion of what was the property. The property to the west of Lot 1 was actually parcel 4 in that the owner of that property, which is our adjoining owner to our south and west, actually utilizes that property and there was a barn immediately built adjacent to our Lot 1 to the west. So even if we could, you couldn't coordinate agricultural use behind that, there would be no contiguous agricultural use. And that was recognized throughout the planning board file. So you have those two reports, and I think that were the only things that were outstanding. We also understand, and your attorney shared with us, the environmental assessment forms prepared by the planning department, the Part 2 environmental assessment form and Part 3, and identified no significant adverse impacts. And I believe you also, based on your agenda, are going to consider assuming lead agency status and possibly a negative declaration. That's all I have to add, if you have any particular questions at this time.
I'd like to see if anybody's here. I know we had some people here last time and then see what the comments from the public would be, and then we could address board comments and where we go from here. So is anybody here on this application? And Charles, if you could see if there are any hands up or otherwise?
I have no hands.
Still no hands?
No hands.
Okay. Katie, we have a secret determination?
We do, and also I'd like Wayne maybe to just talk a little bit more about the landmark, because I know that there are concerns with some of the board members about creating this second lot that is, you know, half of what's required, maybe. I think that the board, since I've been sitting with you, have only used that section, you know, for the landmark designation, maybe once. I think it was for the, maybe Bull's Head Inn or...
No, well, that was back then, but you did it recently with the Cal property in...
Oh, that's right, with the Cal property. Yeah, so maybe, you know, maybe just explain to the board, you know, I know we have reports from the Landmarks Board that say that they do, would like us to preserve this structure.
So, as the board may know, currently the town code does not have historic districts or landmarking without the consent of landowners, and therefore, there is no requirement to preserve or otherwise what be considered a historic structure. That being said, the code also would allow us to have a second dwelling on this property as a, where a historic structure is preserved and landmarked. However, it doesn't allow a subdivision. And here, our client is looking to subdivide ultimately. And if you look at the property, it's sort of very conducive in the odd shape that it is, the L shape, to do that. Section 330-167 requires, and it gives this board greater leeway or discretion to grant variances in where a threatened or otherwise historic structure is being preserved. It requires you to refer this to landmarks. In anticipation of that, our client went first to landmarks last fall and asked them to look at things, because one of the things he wanted to do was do a small addition to the westerly second floor off the deck. And he didn't want to jeopardize the potential of it being designated as a landmark. And that's what they reviewed, but the first question is, is it something of historic significance or quality that is worthy of being landmarked? And the report that came from the Landmarks Board actually gives you a pretty elaborate history of when this house was built at the turn of the 20th century, 1911, I think, or thereabouts. And some of the people that resided there and the quality of the architecture, which has been maintained, and more importantly, our client with guidance from the Landmarks Board has undertaken renovations, redoing the siding and the roof and so on, but basically keeping the historic building, its integrity intact. So the second part is an analysis that whereby if this board can, does grant relief, it would require the designation of the property or the dwelling as a landmark, which then make it subject to the conditions forevermore under the code. In other words, if the future owners want to do any changes or additions, it would require Landmark Board review. And there's certain standards that have to be applied to make sure any additions or alterations were done to preserve the historic status. So this is something that I know that the Landmarks Board has been trying to encourage more and more. The town board did amend the code a few years back, the density incentive provisions of the code, to encourage that. However, the section I mentioned in 330-9 only allows a second dwelling or on the property where you're preserving the historic dwelling, but it doesn't allow you then subsequently to subdivide them and sell them separately. And that's our client's desire, and so that's why we're in front of you for relief for area variances to do that. That being said, the condition of the board's approval, it's anticipated and offered by the applicant that you will condition that upon the filing of the subdivision match, the town board would designate this, go through the public hearing processing, designate this as a landmark. And that is also the representation we've made to the planning board, which I think they're supportive of. I hope that provides a little clarification.
Sorry, go ahead, Katie.
In the instance when the board granted relief from this section before, that when you were talking about the Cal, what was that for? Was that for a house and a carriage house, or what was the use?
So that one, the Cal property in the Art Village, first, the Art Village is one of the few areas that you would say is a true historic district, and a number of lots in that little subdivision just outside the village and near the Shinnecock Reservation had a number of dwellings. Our client's property was one of the largest lots and actually had already two dwellings on the property, one of which was one of the original dwellings. The landowner across the street actually obtained a demolition permit to demolish what was, you know, considered to be a historic structure. And our client wanted to preserve that, didn't think it should be demolished. So they actually reached out and there was a contract and agreement between the two parties that our client would pay for the moving the structure and moving it on to their property. However, because there was already two dwellings on that property, the third dwelling, adding the third dwelling would require and did require relief, and this board did grant relief to allow the third dwelling on the condition that that building, which was known as Laughalot, would be also designated as and preserved as a historic structure, which is what this board granted and what is being accomplished.
I just want to be clear on what the Landmark Board's authority would be. Assuming if we granted the application, you're saying the owner would then be required to go, if they wanted to make any changes to the house, to the Landmark Board for review? Would they have a legal authority to stop any changes from being made to the house? Or is it just more of an advisory capacity?
No, no, no. If you look at the code, it's in the code. It's been there for a number of years, but the problem is they have no power, nor does the town board right now, the way the code is written, to designate something as a landmark that would force the landowner to go through this process, like many other communities, like many of our villages have those kinds of regulations. The current town code actually requires before something is designated as a landmark or a district, that the landowner or landowners actually have to consent.
I got you.
To do that. So as you can imagine, there is very few property owners who are going to consent to those kinds of regulations or restrictions. property owners who are going to consent to those kind of regulations or restrictions. There are a handful throughout the town, but very few. So in the meantime, there's been this approach to incentivize landowners to preserve historic structures. Now, there was an inventory done, the town hired a consultant, there's an inventory, it's online, each of the hamlets identifying parcels that they believe are eligible for landmark status. And this is identified in that study. That was, that study, the excerpts were provided in the record as well as referenced by the landmarks board as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, you know, what one has to do with the other, frankly, the landmarking versus the subdivision. I'm not in favor of granting a severely, almost half undersized lot in this situation. So I'm a no on this. And nothing has compelled me to change my view on that.
I mean, just, that's, that's fine, Mike. But just to answer your first question, what, what they have to do with each other is, is Wayne is basically suggesting, I recognize that this lot will be undersized, but you know, I will, I will preserve this, this landmark, this historic house, which I don't have any obligation to do and which the landmarks board is requesting that I preserve. That's, it's kind of like a mitigation for the size of a lot.
Well, they could do that anyway. I mean, if they want to preserve, they could preserve the house, whether it's on a a one acre lot or a three acre lot, I mean, you know.
No, absolutely.
Trying to negotiate or hold us hostage to do the right thing. I mean, that's up to them, you know, but that, that doesn't, that doesn't impact my, my feelings on this.
Just as, you know, the normal question on creating non-conforming lots, this board would look at the character of the area and other circumstances, the configuration of the parcel. And on top of that, you're getting the historic landmarking of this structure, which ordinarily wouldn't be allowed to be done. So the, the point is, is that the character of the area is not going to change with respect to that lot. We could, like I said, go to the town under the incentive provisions and go build a second dwelling on the, on the, over, you know, the three acre lot. And then you would still have a dwelling on the area of lot one and you would still have the existing house on lot two, which would be preserved. And then you have two dwellings on a lot and the only issue then would be a paper line subdivision between the two of them. So that is, and interestingly, you know, it's in an area that the density incentive provisions, you can create non-conforming lots, but it doesn't, they didn't go a step further when they were considering the addition to the code about four or five years ago. They did it for the second dwelling, but they didn't do it for an undersized lot, which is essentially what the circumstances.
Katie, can I ask you a question? I'm a little confused in terms of Wayne's discussion about the, unless you tell me if I'm, correct me. The need to go through the landmarks and get everything done, A, B, C, or everything corrected. So I mean, is that like a month, going to be two months, three months? Doesn't he need that first before he comes to us so that?
He already, he already has reports and referrals from the landmarks board that say that it's worthy of landmarking. So just like.
But he, he say, Wayne, tell me, did you say you were going to get more material from the landmarks?
No, that was what happened at the May meeting. And then we did get the letter, which was submitted to you. They did a letter on June 26th after they met and it was addressed to the board.
And that's all you need?
Yeah, so we provided that. We also provided you with the planning board report. So I believe you have all the reports that you need with respect to and both the landmarks board and the planning board with respect to the subdivision in that regard.
Did you mention the health department the last time and you were here?
Yes, the health department is the standard process in which we have to go and get. We cannot get that until this board either grants the relief or not. And that's something we typically get in between pre-application and final application to the planning board. So we would, if this board grants this, we already made an application to the health department. We meet their standards for lot size and everything else. So we anticipate them approving it, but they can't move until this board acts. Then we complete our application to the health department. They would grant the approval to the subdivision. Then we go and make our final application back to the planning board, who would probably, like they have always done, if this board conditions this on landmarking, include that as a condition of their approval as well.
Yeah, my issue is, is creating a one acre lot and two acre zoning in one of the most bucolic drives on the east end of Long Island. And I mean, what's the point in having zoning then? You know, we're just going to do that, that sets such a horrendous precedent. We'll have 20 people coming in here in the next three years asking to do the same thing.
Assuming they, assuming they have a house on there that they can landmark.
There's a, it's a, so they'll, they'll quickly forget that there was a house on there that they can landmark. They'll just be coming in to ask for it. And then, you know, you know how this rolls. This rolls downhill. It's a slippery slope. I just can't support it.
I agree with Michael.
Well, before we get into further forward discussion, I do procedurally, we have a secret determination that I think we should, we should handle before moving, moving forward and then we can continue. I believe the discussion with Michael's concerns, Helen's concerns and other board members' concerns here. It's okay, I'll do that now. Okay. Whereas the zoning board of appeals has received an application of BH680 LLC for purposes located at 680 Scuttle Hole Road in Watermill, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-67-1-6.5. And whereas the sub, the submission has been accompanied by an application for variances for a two lot subdivision and special use permit to allow a historically significant single family dwelling to remain on one lot, environmental assessment form and other correspondence. And whereas after review and submittals by the zoning board of appeals, that this project is classified as a type one action under SECRE in chapter 157 of the town code. Whereas Southampton Town Planning Board and the Suffolk County Department of Health are involved agencies, each of which were notified of the application by letter dated June 2nd of 2020. Whereas it has been determined that there are no objections to this board's who be agency status in connection with the SECRE review for this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Southampton Town ZBA hereby agrees to assume lead agency status with regards to the application of BH680 LLC pursuant to 6 NYCRR, section 167-6B. And be it resolved that after reviewing the part one of the environmental assessment form and parts two and three of the environmental assessment form prepared by planning staff on behalf of the zoning board of appeals, the zoning board of appeals finds that due to the nature of the proposed action and the existing site conditions, the proposed activities would not result in any significant environmental impacts. And be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby adopts a negative declaration for the application of BH680 LLC and directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the aforementioned involved agencies. Is there a second? Second? Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle? Keith?
Keith, you're muted.
It appears to be mouthing "aye" in some other comments.
Over here, Keith, right over here. You can press the little thing right here.
No, it's not going to happen.
Mr. Daley?
Nay.
We were just doing the, we weren't voting on the case.
Correct.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, um, it appears that what does the board want to do with this going forward? And we get to have Adam back at the next hearing or how does the board want to proceed? You want to close it for written subs? We want to have them come back when we have a full board? What is the inclination of the board?
It seems like we have all the information we're going to get. I'd be fine closing it for written subs. I haven't made my mind up yet on, you know, I'm going to vote on it, but I'd be fine closing it for written subs.
Okay. How's everybody else feel about that?
Charles, can you, can you send Keith a request to unmute himself? Please.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion then that we close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions through August 3rd with a determination on which meeting, Katie?
You can try for August 6th. I'll try for August.
For August 6th. And that's my motion. Very. Okay, Mr. Kelly? All right. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Tuttle appears to be having technical difficulties. Chair votes "aye". Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Have a good fourth.
You too.
Okay, so we're having trouble with Mr. Tuttle. So I will read the next application for him. Number 15 on tonight's agenda, TICILLC. Property located at 53 Grove Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-31-1-7. This was a holdover from our June 18th meeting. Is there anybody here for the application?
Yes, exactly. Susanna is also probably on the wait.
Tony, can you show your video? Thank you.
Yeah. And Susanna Herman should be in the waiting room.
Coming.
Yeah, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
You guys were both sworn in last time, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so still sworn in and how did we do? What, what were the revisions? Please give us an update.
Okay, so we listened to your comments at the last meeting and we've revised the plan accordingly. We heard you loud and clear that you wanted the amount of pyramid relief requested reduced. So you should have gotten a revised set of elevations and floor plans. Do you have that?
Everybody have those?
If not, I can share my screen.
Share the, share the screen, Susanna.
All right. How's that?
What's the new number, Susanna?
So our previous request was 6,312 cubic feet. We've reduced that to 2,480 square feet, cubic feet. So it's a drastic reduction. We've gone from a pitched roof to a flat roof. That was the previous, you see that? That was the previous proposal. What we've done is just eliminated the pitched roof and gone with the flat roof. So the north side goes from 4,086 cubic feet to 2,022. And the south side goes from 2,026 to 458. So it's a very drastic reduction in the amount of relief requested. The architect is also showing on the elevation here. Let me see if I can make this bigger. The property line is not, the house is not completely square with the property line. It actually gets wider as you go away from the, from the street. So we're showing two different locations. One from the, the side yard from the front corner and this line is from the side yard from the rear corner. So from the front corner, we're not actually requesting very much relief at all on this side. So that's just to show you that. Also, I wanted to point out that about a year and a half ago, this board approved a variance for slightly greater pyramid relief, two doors down, two doors to the north at the Lorraine Davis property. You approved a variance of 2,713 cubic feet of relief for a much bigger house. So I have a copy of that that I can forward to your attention to add to the file. So as you can see, it's, it's a drastic reduction. I don't think we could possibly design it to require less relief than we're requesting here.
I mean, it's a very open ended question, but I do appreciate the effort that was, was put in in terms of reducing non-essential, you know, roughly 4,000 cubic feet of aesthetics only, which, you know, isn't what the board's here for. It works for me. We'll see what other board members think and what the members of the public, but I think it's a good effort and it greatly reduces what you're asking for here. So I would be okay with it as proposed.
You too.
I have no problem with it.
I'm okay.
Thank you, Susanna, for doing what you did.
Oh, don't thank me. Thank the homeowner and the architect. They're, they're the ones.
Thank you, Mr. Architect.
Okay, Charles, if we could see if anyone is here from the public or raising their hand.
No.
Okay, so seeing or hearing nobody. And this is, Michael, it's ours.
Sure. So we will close the public hearing except for written submissions up until August the 3rd. And are we going to be able to have a decision August 8th, Katie? It seems like we're getting so, we're waiting for so many things all the way to the 3rd and then only to the 6th to have decisions.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay because we're not waiting for anything from these guys and there's nobody in opposition. So.
Okay. All righty, so we'll have a decision for you on August 6th.
All righty. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle? He's mouthing "aye". And Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
And chair votes "aye".
Katie, I have Keith on the phone. He's yelling "aye".
I know.
We don't even need the phone to hear him from there.
No, we need him. I need to be able to hear him on the books.
Gotcha. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, which is number 46 on tonight's agenda. It is.
Thank you.
It is Maria and Michael Rothstein, 43 Tianna Circle in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-345-2-1. And I'll read it because we can't hear Keith. On June 18th of 2020, by decision D020042, this board granted the applicant variance relief for a proposed swimming pool and proposed two story dwelling. This decision is being amended to correct a Scrivener's error to with the date of the survey. So I do have an amended decision, which would be on file at town hall, and I will summarize it now. The amendment is for the property located at 43 Tiana Circle in Hampton Bay. On June 18th of 2020, by decision D020042, the board granted variances for a proposed pool and pyramid accroachment for a proposed dwelling. It is, it was discovered, however, that the decision did not refer the most recent survey. As such, ZBA decision D020042 dated June 18th of 2020 is hereby amended to refer to the survey prepared by.
Can you hear me?
Land surveyor.
Can anybody hear me out there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Breathe your lips of all those dirty words you were saying too for the last.
How do you read my lips?
Last revised March 25th of 2020. All other provisions of decision number for D 020042 remain in full force and effect.
Seconds.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Tuttle?
Aye. Take it easy, Jay. I'm back with you guys.
All the decisions will be on file, uh, at town hall. At the full decision, we'll be reading abbreviated parts summaries for purposes of this evening on Zoom. A decision for Peter Walsh and Susan Walsh, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-81-3-11. The application is for a property located at 122 Strong's Lane in Watermill. The applicants have asked for variances for a shed, existing house, and in addition to the house. This application passes the standards set forth in town code and New York State law. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for the main dwelling relief 33011 residential district of table dimensional regulations for a principal front yard setback of 77.6 feet or 80 feet is required. Two, for a proposed addition to the main dwelling relief from 33011 for a principal front yard setback of 76.5 feet or 80 feet is required. And three, legalize the shed constructed without the benefit of a building. 311. For an accessory front yard setback of 13.6 feet where 90 feet is required in section 330716 placement of accessory building structures and uses and section 3303 yards. These variances are granted with structures as shown in a survey prepared by Joseph Sacafico, ELS of Colonial Surveying PC dated November 6th, 2019. And the plan prepared by David H. Sherwood, AI, October 25th of 2019. The decision is conditioned upon removal of the existing outdoor shower as shown in the survey. Granted the foregoing release to subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Kelly?
Aye.
Tuttle?
Aye.
Daly?
Aye.
Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next is the determination in Beach House Associates LLC. Application is for a single and separate determination for property located at 19 Wicketuck Drive in New York. The board finds of its subject premises located at 19 Wicketuck Drive in New York 915-2-44 is a single and separate 1,061 square foot lot. It is thus titled to relieve from town code section 330115D. Decision is conditioned upon the disposition of ownership of the subject premises and the adjacent lot 45. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next decision is 295 Montauk Highway, Inc. In Hampton, located at St. Agnes. This is one of three properties before the board in connection with the Edgewater Restaurant. The proposed action was classified as type one pursuant to plan. Type one and the board adopted a negative declaration on January 23rd of 2020. Finding no environmental issues with the proposed design, the applicant has requested variances for the placement of a dumpster and parking. This application passes the standards set forth in town code and New York State law. Therefore, the board grants relief from the following provisions of the town code. 33083G1A yards to allow a parking area three feet from the rear yard where 17 feet is existing on a non-conforming lot. Two, town code 33078 placement of accessory buildings and uses in non-residential districts to allow parking spaces numbers one to 10 to be located three feet from the rear property line north where 10 feet is required. About parking space number one to be located zero feet from the side northerly property line where 10 feet. Allow parking spaces 11 through 16 to be located 8.9 feet from the west of the property line. To allow parking spaces 33 to 42 to be located zero feet from the eastern property line. Allow parking space 25 to continue to be located line where 10 feet is required from all property lines. Four, town code 330100F1, exemptions and waivers to the parking and truck loading requirement. We allow a parking area subject to planning approval to be located in subject dumpers. Adjoining site to the east, west. And five, town code 33034 business district of dimensional regulations allow a dumpster and dumpster pit to be located zero feet straddling the lot line with a parcel to the west where accessory structures shall be located on the, located on the subject property. These variances are granted for structures and setbacks as shown in a survey prepared by Jeff W. Hadner, LS of Brooklyn Works Land Surveying is October 7th, last revised February 19th, 2020. And the site plan of Edgewater Restaurant prepared by Sean Leonard, AIA, last prepared November 15th, 2019, as it relates to parking. This decision is conditioned upon the premises being used in connection with the development of the lot as shown on the aforementioned site plan. The decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire the final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Nay.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Decision in the matter of J10 Holdings LLC, properties located at 293 Montauk Highway in Hampton Bay. This is one of the three properties before the board. Again, uh, type one, planning adopted a negative declaration on January 23rd of 2020. Proposing a new restaurant that's for setback variances for parking dumpster and converted existing motel for housing for the premises and the Edgewater Restaurant. This applicant passes the standards set forth in town code and New York State law. Therefore, for the recent, but fourth year in, the board grants the following provisions of relief from the town code. One, 33083G1A yards allow parking area three feet from the rear yard and to allow a pre-existing motel parking to remain three feet from the side yard where a transition yard is required. Two, town code section 33078 placement of accessory buildings and structures in non-residential districts to allow the parking area to be located three feet from the northerly property line where 10 feet is required. Zero feet from the northeasterly property line where the parking spaces across into Edgewater lot where 10 feet is required. And three, from the westerly property line where 10 feet is required. Three, town code 330100F1 exemptions and waivers of parking and truck loading space requirements to allow parking area to be located on adjoining sites as required for parking spaces number 20. And five, town code 33034 business district table of dimensional regulations to allow a dumpster and dumpster pit to be located at zero feet straddling the lot line with the Edgewater property where accessory structures are to be located on the subject property. This board also grants relief for the following provisions of the town code. Allow the conversion of existing two-story motel into housing for restaurant employees. One, town code 33076C placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses in all districts to allow the accessory building structures or use on the adjacent lot to a restaurant employee house with a principal site of the Edgewater Restaurant. Town code 3154B, housing for restaurant employees to allow the proposed employee housing to be located on the site, the restaurant detached from the principal building. Town code 330154C to allow the existing side yard setback of 39.3 feet on the west and 15 feet on the east. I'm gonna have a setback, I think people need to be required. Four, town code 33154D to allow the kitchen or cooking facilities within the proposed employee house. Five, town code 33154G allow four two-bedroom motel units to be used as employee housing for four employees on a non-conforming lot. These variances are granted for structures and setback as shown in a survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hadner, L, Land Surveyor dated August 26th of 2017, last revised February 19th of 2020. The site plans for the Edgewater Restaurant as prepared November 15th, 2019 by Sean Leonard, AIA, as it relates to the parking. This decision is conditioned upon the premises being used in connection with the development of the lots as shown on the aforementioned site plan and upon employee housing on the subject premises only being used for restaurant employees working on the subject premises and at Edgewater. Conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Daly?
Nay.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Chair votes aye. Determination of matter of J10 Properties LLC. This application is for property located at 5 South Valley Road in Hampton Bay. This is one of the three properties before the board in connection with the Edgewater Restaurant. The proposed act was classified as type one, planning adopted a negative declaration on January 23rd of 2020. Finding no environmental issues with the proposed design, the applicant has asked for setback variances for parking. The application passes the standards set forth within town code and New York State law. Therefore, this board grants relief from town code section 330100F1, exemptions and waivers from parking and truck loading to allow the coordination of cross-access and parking to allow 20 spaces to be established on a site which benefits from a residential use located in the motel zoning district. Town code section 33078 placement of accessory buildings and uses in non-residential districts to allow 10 of the 20 parking spaces from the adjacent property to the west to be located zero feet from the side westerly property line where 10 feet is required. As shown on the site plan of the Edgewater Restaurant last prepared by architect Sean Leonard on November 15th of 2019. The survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hardner and Brooklyn Works Land Surveying dated October 10th of 2017, last revised February 19th of 2020. This decision is conditioned on the premises being used in conjunction with the development of the lots as shown on the aforementioned site plan and subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the premises.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Mr. Daly?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Motion to close.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody have a good.